It's always good that you.
Yes.
Do you remember my first time in Lenoir?
Yep.
We were at high school and it just started.
Yep.
And I found that dollar bill. That's the day I found my bag over the clothes bar.
Yes.
And we went up and. Yeah, benefits.
Yes.
I just found the dollar bill.
Yes.
And I saved up. I'm picking them back to one twenty.
Yes.
The teacher wrote us, "Thank you." So we're always in traction. And I looked at it and said, "You're still good." You're very decent. It's like one dollar. It was like.
How nice you.
I was thinking, "Why is why I have all the kids?" They weren't paying attention. But it really was like. And we did not mean, and then I realized. That made it a fact.
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Lemon Grove State Council. Well, before please call and enroll other city council members, go on the record app and attend this. Councilmember Gastel.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
And Mayor Bonsdahl. Here behind the flag. A quick for the checklist, ask Councilmember Mendoza, someone who is in the flag.
Dearest to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Madam here, there's no changes to the agenda. Thank you so very much. I'd like to introduce Ericum Lincoln, Lemon Grove School Board Superintendent, and Cherie Stocker, Chief of Business Official. So the thing needs to lie in presentation.
Um, Cherie is actually not here today. She's um, working on our budget. Um, so I'm here actually tonight. I requested with City Manager Romero the opportunity to share some information about a bond offering that we have, that our Lemon Grove School Board can vote into place on the ballot in November. Um, I live at this moment, if I can, I just want to introduce Dr. Javier Ayala. He is one of our Board of Trustees members. He's just here to provide long story. Um, and a roof member, actually, so I could see him being here. So I'm going to go ahead and run through the presentation. I'm definitely happy to answer your questions. I also brought a little gift for you. A lantern and a lemon pen. This is a chemical place. Um, okay, so we'll get started. All right, so um, one of the things that I thought would be important for you to know, obviously representative of the city, um, and just having implications in terms of, um, you know, potential or future access for our citizens, um, as much information as you could get in a ten minute presentation so that you are really in step with what the district priorities are. Because I think this school is also doing what it needs. So I hopefully give us as a bonus for the community as a whole. Um, so the priorities are that we would, um, we have placed, we're going to place in November on the ballot, a bond tax rate extension. So we will time the sale of our bonds basically to backfill expiring bonds or paid off bonds over the next thirty years. So the idea is that our citizens in Lemon Grove don't have any new taxes. We're going to simply extend the taxes that they already getting, um, on their properties for bonds that were passed in the past. Um, the major, um, benefit of this new bond is about half the money would go towards building a brand new school campus here in Lemon Grove. It would, it would be the first new campus in Lemon Grove since the nineteen fifty's. So almost the last new campus we built. It's an early childhood education center. Um, and I'll provide a little bit of background information about state priorities and why we're in funding for that. Um, the third thing that we wanted to kind of share about was our major deferred maintenance, which is the cost of our current campuses. So we have quite a backlog on our school facilities just related to infrastructure, plumbing, electrical, roofs, um, ADA compliance, all of those things. Um, this is just like a little snapshot of the district. We have eight schools. Um, we have five elementary schools, uh, one middle school, uh, academy, this La Mesa, which is technically in La Mesa. Um, and then we have, uh, this will be our new school, our early childhood education campus. It is actually opening in the fall. We used to rent or lease the Palm Campus to Liberty Charter High School. So knowing and anticipating this need to provide, um, early childhood education as a mandate from the state, we, we had to basically let that lease expire so that we could take the campus back to build a new school. We will actually temporarily be housing our TKers and preschool classrooms in the current classrooms at Palm. Um, and that will be for two years until the campus, the brand new campus is built. Uh, we do have a total, uh, right now, um, TK, pre-K, eight, about thirty-four hundred students enrolled in Lemon Grove. And we have about five hundred twenty employees. So that includes certified teachers, classified staff, administration. And, um, then we also on top of that employ a lot of substitutes in temporary jobs. So hopefully that's provided in that. There we go. Oh. Okay, so this, I just wanted to share a little bit of the voter information to you so you can be educated about what we're exactly doing. Um, so litigation has been paid for through the property taxes. And so our strategy is basically to go in with our new bond and backfill as payoffs happen. So there's no new taxes for, um, us constituents. And what you can see, um, on the right in the table is basically what would be the timing of the sale of the bond. So it did result in an increased tax rate for our, for our, um. So we, we've for a month time worked with, um, um, bonds organization out of San Francisco, famous Dale Scott. He's, um, very well known in the education community. So we did some free polling of registered voters, uh, to kind of gauge the interest or acceptability for them in terms of offering a bond. Um, so we did this in March twenty twenty-two. We had two hundred fifty-nine completed surveys with people who responded. Um, so seventy-one percent had a strong favorable, uh, impression or support for, uh, offering a new bond. And we, we described some of the priorities in the bond. Uh, we had thirteen percent that would mean yes, two percent don't know, and then about fourteen percent that would be a hard no or mean no. So I don't, those are really strong polling numbers. And historically, Lemon Grove has been very, very supportive of any bond offering that we have, um, ranging between about sixty percent passing to, I think, seventy-seven percent high in, um, when we built the library. Um, so the next, I kind of want to talk a little bit about the Early Childhood Education Center because we see this not only as a benefit to the district, but a huge benefit to the community and the families of Lemon Grove. Um, so I wanted to share a little background about why are we doing this? Um, I don't, I, I know that in order to get there is to make, um, TK or transitional kind of our universal free all family school day. And so there's a phased-in approach from the cities, from the state. So I'm not, I won't go into details, but basically we're going to build it in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and based on demographic studies that we've done at East and Main in Lemon Grove, the City of Lemon Grove, at twenty-five, twenty-six, that would be, um, survey three hundred and nineteen TKers. Um, we could also be able to potentially with our facility draw in additional enrollments. If, if TK is not required, much like in the, it's optional. So if we don't necessarily have the full demand within our community, we can also take in families from other communities. So I wanted to just give you a quick little highlight of the area we would be talking about. Can you go back one more?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So this is an aerial shot of the current Palm Campus. Hand left, will they? Yeah, okay. Um, the highlighted yellow area is the area where we'll build and develop the preschool campus. Um, and then over on the right hand side is where the existing buildings are. As I said, like, one of the things we have to do is begin to, um, house the kids on the main campus while the preschool campus is being built. Um, so we'll be doing about eighteen months of construction while we locate the solar panels to another location at the school site. So that entire yellow area, uh, will, will consist of, of the school. So we're going to give you a little, it's, we're, we're very early in the stage, so this is just conceptual. There we go. Um, so if you look to the right, that's where the solar panels are right now. So that will be parking and drop off. Um, it will consist of, the CR is classroom space, MP is multi-purpose room. In the internal part are, are kind of the grassy play areas. And then on the back will be, um, play areas that have different sensory and playground kind of equipment that will allow kids to do different activities. So, um, at its capacity, it can serve, um, three hundred and sixty students. Um, it's a thirty million dollar project. We will have, um, hopefully our plan and what we understand is about half of it paid for by the state of California for hardship funding for our community. And that's based on demographics and socioeconomic levels as well as our current debt. Um, and then one of the things obviously that we're keeping an eye on is inflation and exploitation of costs. And you've already built that into the cost of the campus. Um, do you want me to stop there or anything? And if you have any questions about the Early Childhood Education Campus before I go into the further.
You might, that is, uh, but I wasn't quite getting.
Can you, um, please turn on the light?
Yeah, I wasn't quite getting, why are, why are we building new buildings and not using the existing Palm Middle School?
The cost of renovating and building classrooms is actually only about ten percent less than building a completely new campus. So our thought was that with the ability to have a brand new campus with a completely, um, custom designed facility with all of the newest features, it was a better move for us to build a new one rather than try to rehave a one. Um, with ADA compliance, a campus that was built for middle school kids and not littles. Um, there's, there's so much remediation work that needs to be done that in essence, it's basically equivalent for us to go ahead and build a new campus.
Did, did you already say, what, what's the plan for the Palm Middle School Campus?
Um, well, right now we are having some district administration offices. We do want to be able to, um, create, once the TKers have transitioned into their new campus, um, a, a specific moderate to severe special education campus that would meet like high behavior and academic or health needs that are often not best suited in our traditional elementary schools. Um, that would also, that would also allow us to take, not take, but receive enrollment from other school districts that don't have similar programs. So it could actually fund itself if we get some additional enrollment. The cap there would probably be about fifty or sixty students. Um, the rest of it is really up for, um, our district leadership to work with the communities inside. What is the best use for the remainder states, the leader of the states to build a new campus?
Thank you.
Um, thank you so much. I want to check in with Councilmember Mendoza to see if you have questions.
Um, so on, on your, well, first of all, I think my daughter-in-law already enrolled my grandson. So we'll be a, um, a new, a new family at the TK. Um, it looks like on the plan that the, um, the entrance to the school is going to move from Palm to Mount Vernon. And.
No.
Oh, it's not.
Well, you talked about on the backside.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay. Because I was thinking traffic.
That would be.
There's already a school. Okay, all right, you got, all right, you got it.
And I do, I do also want to say that, um, Ms. Romero and the City Planning Department, we, obviously we haven't started like a major major planning, but she's already committed to have the city staff work alongside with our architects and engineers as we develop that to make sure that we're speed moves with now the traffic flow and the paths.
Right. Because that's such an issue, you know, all over Lemon Grove. Um, and then, um, oh, yeah, just to piggyback on what, um, Councilmember Gastel said, um, you know, I, I, like you said, it's a middle school and now we're going to have like little three and four and maybe some quadrants there. And I would imagine that you have, you're going to have to have like shorter potties and lower count, you know. So it, it really would, I, I can see where it would entail a lot of, um, reconfiguration of existing buildings. So that makes, it makes sense that you would have to build a new campus. Thank you.
Mayor Thompson Jones.
Um, I guess the first question is, is the state's not mandating that you do the pre-K. How much money are they putting into the district or are they putting in any?
Well, there's, there's a formula. So when I, when I spoke about that, we thought we would be eligible for about half of the costs to be reimbursed to us through the state. There's a variety of factors that the state takes into account. One, shovel-ready projects. So do you have your plans? Do you have your approvals? Do you have your site? Um, the other thing that they want to do to test the communities that really are underserved over time and they have formulas for that, it has to do with the number of kids that qualify for free reduced lunch. It has to do also with our, um, tax rate base. So they would want to funnel that information, that money into communities that maybe the home values aren't as high as, let's say, you know, you're at a, a location in the corner or something. Like they have a stronger tax base than, than we do. So those are all the factors that go into deciding how much they'll give you and all of our applications are in for that. Um, so we don't know exactly what that would be, but we're projecting hopefully as fifty percent, possibly as high as sixty percent.
Sounds like the shenanigans they pulled when they did class size reduction when I was on the school board. Um, uh, the other question is, um, well, well, let me just first say Palm Middle School is originally a middle school, not a middle school. Yeah, yeah, that was an issue when I was on the school board and we were doing modernization there. Um, was bringing some of the stuff up to, to middle school standards from, from elementary school. Bathroom was a big one back then. The bathrooms were inadequate. Um, and, and I'm curious, I, I, you know, I mean, you, you know, you're talking about bringing it up to, to current standard. That, that school was modernized, well, in twenty years, but I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of improvements would be done in a new building versus, versus an old building?
Um, well, one, one of the things would be energy efficiency, that would be number one. Number two would be, um, building a school that is really designed with modern standards. Um, so I don't know how much we all about preschool and TK, but they're, they're regulated to the very square inch of everything that happens in their classrooms. And so there's a lot of formulas that would take how much place space and how much classroom space, bathrooms in every single classroom. And, um, for us to take Palm and make it meet the standards of today is extraordinarily expensive. And honestly, in my opinion, I'd rather invest in a brand new building with a life of, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years than go in and have to rehave a building that's already well past its end of life, if you know. Um, I, and then, you know, I'm obviously part of it, being able to add in technology and being able to add in modern spaces for kids to dance and play and have music and, um, so it's kind of, in my opinion, a bit of a, like, very big moment for, for us. Uh, because we don't have many spaces that are really modern and upstate like that. I mean, we do our best to continue to rent the classrooms and schools. Um, but I really feel like such a huge wonderful opportunity for kids and families here.
I think Councilwoman Gastel asked a legitimate question on, on what, what's been happening with the rest of that space. When I was on the school board, I think we had six or seven hundred students on that campus. And now you're adding space for three hundred more. So I mean, there's a, there's a pretty big capacity there and, and those buildings are still a viable building. We, you know, when we did modernization when I was on the school board, we stripped those classrooms to the studs. I know I went and looked.
Yeah.
They were completely stripped to the studs. And so I mean, there's, there's a, the school district has a huge asset there. They have too much of the public and the public's going to ask us, you know, what's, what's going to happen to that, you know? And these are questions that, that we're going to have to answer, so.
Yeah, so that's, I, I think, um, I've had more members of ours say, hey, you know, what are things that we can do at Palm Campus once the preschool TK campus is built? That could, you know, benefit the community. So I think, um, as far as I'm aware, our entire board is very supportive of making sure that whether that's sharing space with community organizations or providing, uh, recreation, um, for soccer leagues or baseball leagues or things that people will support wellness and community. I know that they're all highly supportive of that. It's just a matter of probably the committee and people get to decide what the priorities are and all of that. Yeah. Funding is also an act.
Uh, thank you so very much. And while, um, I know we just have a total few more slides, um, um, I appreciate this quick snapshot that you provided to us. We are writing this effort. But also, um, I'd like to know if we will receive an update when we have our joint meeting.
Yes, of course. I don't know how much progress we'll make in six weeks, but what we know, and Cherie is definitely the brains behind the operation, so she will be able to give, um, more details. Uh, we're in the process right now of, um, working with our committee to actually give the architects kind of like our big vision items and then they'll come back and present some concepts to us. I don't know if we can have those by our joint meeting, but if we do, I'd be, I, if you'd be interested, I'd be more than happy to kind of share what some of that was going.
Uh, thank you so very much. And I'll turn it back forward to you so that you can continue on with the major deferred maintenance.
Okay, so I just, this is kind of like, I don't know, I don't know who said that, but the infrastructure wasn't sexy. But this is our unsexy stuff here. Um, so these are all of the short-term, intermediate, and long-term needs for our campuses related to just upgrading them, revitalizing them, taking care of the sort of basic systems that need to operate well for schools to be safe, dry, and warm. Um, so we've kind of broken out for you just so you can see, um, by school, what our deferred maintenance needs are. So again, electrical, plumbing, roofs, um, safety. So for energy safety, which obviously is, um, something that's come up very recently in the news, cameras, wiring, or technology, all of that stuff is included in there. So, um, as you can see, the need is great. It's not unusual for backlog or for maintenance to be higher than the district's ability to pay. Um, but we can make a significant dent in this with the passage of the bond. So we'll, we'll continue to like chip away at some of the things that we need to work on. Um, and then we have a very strong maintenance team at the district that are on staff, working full-time basically all year. Um, and then they take, they take care of some of these things as they come up or as we plan for improvements. Um, this is just telling a little bit about how we prioritize our needs. So obviously, anything that's, um, a safety need or a high priority, if it fails, that it costs us more to fix. So we're constantly trying to look at what the priorities are and stay ahead of anything that would cause a shutdown or anything like that. Um, we, we've not encountered any of that in the five years that I've been here. Um, so we're, we're good at maintaining our buildings, it's just things like wear out over time. So, um, any, any additional funding that we can get to make progress, we're, we'd be very excited.
Uh, thank you so very much. And I want to check in, um, here to see if we have any additional questions or comments. Councilmember Gastel. Uh, Councilmember Mendoza. And Mayor Thompson Jones.
I just had, actually too, uh, in your, in your needs assessment where you've got these figures, is, is there like a, like a list of things that you're doing, like HVAC roofing, uh, those kind of things?
So I can, if you're interested, we have a very detailed facilities needs assessment. Um, we sent the last year with the architects and consultants to go like code with all of our mechanisms and identify our needs. So we have about a hundred page document, um, that will list by school, everything that goes down to the main detail.
Awesome. I, I would expect that that's, we did that in back when.
I can tell that Cynthia, if you guys have any, just in your spare time.
Perfect. Uh, and the last question is, what, what's the district's overall budget? What's the, what's the big number?
Um, well, we're closing the books now. So the, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our, um, gonna close the books on sixty-seven million dollars.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven million. There's a lot of extra money right now, one-time funds that will drop off in the next year. Uh, but just for a little context, education funding in the state of California has increased dramatically in the last four or five years underground in Mount Vernon. Um, there's a combination of reasons why that's happening. One is declining enrollment, but the guarantee is that fifty percent. One is declining enrollment, but the guarantee is that fifty percent of the state's, um, revenue are those two schools. So, when you reduce the number of kids, that actually drives up the per pupil fund. So, we're, we're benefiting from that. We're benefiting, obviously, from a bumper year in terms of taxes, um, and the state of, and I know we're all fully familiar with how the state kind of lacking the lane based on investments and that sort of thing. Um, so we're benefiting from that. And then all of the extra, like, COVID funding, COVID-30, um, we, we've gotten millions of dollars in the last three years, yeah.
When I was there, the last year I was there, it was about thirty-four million, so it's kind of pretty significant.
It, uh, yeah, it'll drop down when all that one-time funding falls out, but it's still very good. We're fortunate.
Thank you. And, um, I just wanted to, um, have it stated on the record when we have our joint meeting, uh, with the school board. I'm hoping to superintend, twelve.
I think Tuesday is, uh...
So, on July twelfth, um, the public will be able to attend a joint meeting with the City of Lemon Grove City Council and, um, the school board. And on the agenda will be this particular topic, um, which is the, the bond tax rate extension. And, uh, regarding this particular topic, do you have any information currently posted on your website?
Um, we have, we have lots of documents that have gone before our board. So, like, in our past agendas, um, there, I mean, I don't know, we've probably had ten or twelve agenda items. Like, the last year, we didn't have two to place upon. Um, something specific to this? No, like, there's no pop-up on our website, but it's a great idea, we do, yeah.
Uh, thank you. And, and if you decide to, um, for us to reiterate, uh, regarding this, if we could get the link, uh, so we can share it on our city webpage as well.
Yes.
And, um, uh, for those who are interested, it will be easy access to the information prior to this pending our joint meeting.
Yeah, that's a great point to have.
And, uh, again, thank you so much for providing, uh, this update. And I really appreciate you and all that each and every person that I work with in the school system to help groom our next generation of leaders.
Thank you for having me. I just hope that it's...
Thank you. Uh, before we move on to the next presentation, I do want to mention that, um, uh, Councilmember LeBaron sent an email stating, uh, that, uh, she will not be here today and that she is absent. And then also, I'd like to back up on the agenda here, um, and I wanna make sure that we have on the record, um, if we have any changes to our agenda. Okay, so we do not have any changes to the agenda. Uh, moving forward here to our second presentation, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant McElroy, uh, for the Sheriff's Department to present on the computer, if it is possible.
Thank you. Good job, Griffin. See if this works. I brought my startling wager disappointed in this case, but this will, uh... Can I advance on this? All right, hopefully this won't take too long to talk about something the Sheriff's Department recently rolled out. It's our public-facing calls-for-service webpage. Move to the next slide. Uh, the purpose of this is to keep the members of the public informed. Uh, it's, it, essence will give you a snapshot of police activity at the department. And they probably see much of, uh, sheriff's vehicles or activity if you're on a call, you can see what it is. Uh, it'll help increase public safety 'cause the public can also, you can hear, the public can also monitor this to see if it's something they need to stay away from. Say, for example, that deputies are working a crime in progress, if people just kind of wonder, so it's, you know, purpose kind of help the public with that and also takes some of the burden off our dispatchers from getting calls from concerned members of the community. It also can help to reduce community concerns whenever possible. Uh, sometimes there's a concern when people see two or three sheriff's vehicles on their street or down the street or in front of the neighbor's house. A lot of times, certain calls just require two deputies, it could just be something as simple as a noise disturbance or it could be a training car and people say, oh, it's, it's really not a vehicle. So, it's kind of one of the main uses of it is, with just that, getting that public information out there. There's some parameters with this web page. It, it updates every five minutes, but the user, you have to refresh it yourself. When you go to the website and click on refresh, it'll bring up the call. So, it just, it's not a running ticker-tick that keeps updating manual, updating on Sonya but manually. It only displays open radio calls and anything with a ten to fifteen-minute buffer after. So, the deputy's clearer call, it'll stay on the site for ten to fifteen minutes and then disappear off it. And it is limited, just for the sake of privacy, it's limited to the nearest block number or intersection. 'Cause, uh, quite often, a sheriff's vehicle will park in front of a residence. It's not the affected residence, deputies will park two, three, four houses down sometimes and walk in. It's not like putting anyone on blast, like, oh, your cops are in front of your house, anything, I can get the house. But just, uh, kind of, you can look up what block number and it'll show it up. Next. Restrictions for this site, it, it will not display deputy, deputy-initiated calls. It only displays calls where, uh, members of the community called Sheriff's Department for service. One of the reasons for that is, is for deputy's safety. If a deputy's doing a traffic stop, we don't wanna put out to the public that if I have a, a deputy working traffic enforcement in a certain area, a lot of times they'll create a call to do that. And it's, we don't need to bring unnecessary attention to them until they do that. So, it's not gonna show a traffic stop, uh, things like that. Same thing if deputies are doing a proactive community outreach thing for our, our unhoused individuals on north. We don't, we're not gonna put that up there just 'cause we don't wanna bring unnecessary attention that we're bringing the community. We don't, we don't wanna be accused of, of anything that might be public shame or whatnot, 'cause sometimes it's the objects we deal with. It will not display the source of the call, meaning, um, the, uh, citizen that generated the calls for service, not gonna show their name or where they called from. It also won't provide any identifying information on involved parties, things, uh, reporting party, witnesses, victims, suspects. It's not gonna give a disposition like that. So, you can't find, uh, names of individuals or anything like that. It's a state protected. Next slide. Here's kind of what it looks like. I'll, uh, I have a couple more slides where it's actually zoomed in, but when you go to the sheriff's webpage, and at the end of this, I'll explain how to get, how to find this on our webpage. It looks just like this, uh, this I brought up yesterday. It tells you when it was last updated and then all the calls for service. And we'll, we'll get into the weeds on each of these in a sec. Thanks. Kind of zoomed in as best I could. This is what it looks like. Initially, when you log into the system, it will show you every call for service in sheriff's area throughout the county. There's a way to filter that out and I'll, I'll show that, but just go on left to right. It's the date and time of the call, uh, the type of event. So, a lot of the events are coded, but we'll be going some plain English there, four fifteen disturbance, a report of a fraud, a report of illegal campaign, missing person at risk, things such as that. And then it has the approximate location. It'll have, you know, block number right there, there's one with an intersection on it. And then it also has the affected community. So, as you're looking here, there's Antoninus, Palloway, unincorporated alcohol, and so on and so forth. Service area, that is the sheriff's station that's responsible for that. So, if you don't see what's going on in Disturb Highway, you can do that. And then the event number, that's just the, our, our system of tracking when anyone calls in and gets an event number. And if you did have a major concern with something that would require you, like, hey, I really wanna call and find out about this to make sure it's okay for my kids to go out, a lot of times schools will call and see if they go in lockdown. It, it's very helpful if you jot down the event number when they call in and say, hey, I'm, you know, this event number's going on here in my house. Should I be concerned? And the dispatcher can help you out. We don't encourage plugging in the system when that, when not necessary, but it is there if you need it. Next. It's kind of zoomed in. If you don't wanna look at the entire county and you just wanna say, look at, uh, Letter Grove, right there, it's a search. You just type in Lemon Grove or you can type in Rancho San Diego. If we follow their, through our dispatch center, Rancho San Diego, Lemon Grove, we'll dispatch, I would say, in radio queue. So, it'll show up from there. Next. So, when you type in Lemon Grove, then it just filters your search down to all of Lemon Grove and all of Rancho San Diego. Again, 'cause we share it in the state dispatch system. So, this again, yesterday, there's a suspicious person called, let's leave that as much detail as it'll provide. Uh, ten thirty-five dangerous personal alert, there's some activity yesterday near one of our gas stations where, uh, deputies got a tip on someone with a felony warrant. So, those are quoted as a dangerous personal alert, it'll lead to arms and dangerous, and actually, that person's in jail right now, so we're good. Um, if you get a shooting, it's gonna show up like that, or a stabbing or anything involving a weapon, we'll all go to the state. He said, two forty-five assault with a deadly weapon. So, deadly weapon is a rather broad term, just for, say, that. Next. All right, before stuff, how to find it? On the sheriff's website, you go to, uh, just our public website, stsheriff.gov. On the website, there's an icon for open data. That's where you get all sorts of public records, things such as that. Under open data, you go to calls for service and it'll bring up that screen I just showed you. Or you can just set a hyperlink right there and it'll go right to it as well. Thanks. And that's it on that. And just something else, just to remind, uh, we, we do have a nine-one-one tech system as well. And this is more, our, our comm center gets about two thousand calls for service a day, that they're inundated with calls. It's always better to call, I would say that. But if, for whatever reason, someone's hearing impaired or if it's just dangerous to speak. We've had that before where someone's kind of locked in a closet. Or if, um, a medical emergency, someone collapses and they can't speak, you can always text nine-one-one. So, as long as you hit a cell tower that's in sheriff's area, it'll go to our comm center. You, you text nine-one-one, no dashes, uh, location, and then your message of what it is. Be prepared for requests to come back at you and that's a dispatcher, the dispatch supervisor will monitor that on the real-time computer screen. So, if they get a text to nine-one-one, they're immediately typing, what's the emergency, what do you have? So, just prepare to type those back. Again, faster, more preferable to call nine-one-one, but that is always an option that we like to remind the public and any that is available. That's it. I have nothing else. Do you have any questions for me on this? What was that big thing I heard earlier?
It's not on here. It's on the, on the call. Most of the calls are screened down.
Yeah. This is a secure dial.
Thank you so very much. Uh, I'll kick in, uh, starting with Councilmember Gasol.
All right. No, I don't have any questions.
Uh, Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, no, no questions, but, uh, this, I, I think the community, um, will really, um, benefit from, uh, you know, people wanna, they just wanna know what's, what's going on. Why there's six, uh, um, sheriff cars parked on Broadway, um, so, um, yeah, thank, thank you for doing this.
It, it is a news that, it went online, I believe, in the last month or so. So, there may be some tweets and there may be, we, we anticipate some growing things perhaps. Eventually might add, start adding a little more data, yeah, that's, yeah, long overdue.
Thank you. And Lieutenant Jones?
I'm never going here again. It scares me. Okay, no, I'm scared, man.
And, uh, thank you so much for providing this presentation. And, uh, this information is available on the sheriff's website.
That's right.
And, um, uh, I really appreciate you stepping up and ensuring that we are aware of what's going on, um, with the sheriff's department and the technology and how it can send to the public, um, and make questions about what's going on in your, um, backyard. So, uh, yeah.
I have actually, I think, stats, we, we could, uh, do this on, on our website, or do we have them?
We will, we will add a link. I made a note to do that, but we'll get back in the office tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, uh, you just kind of, you're there. Okay. And, uh, uh, McElroy, again, thank you so much for all that you do.
Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to our general public comment portion of the meeting. In accordance with state law, public may bring forth and are not scheduled on the agenda. However, the city council may not be in yet and at the time. If appropriate, I don't need to refer staff or place on a future agenda. Each comment addressed to the city council will have a maximum of three minutes. Um, currently, our city clerk will let you know, uh, when you have a minute, thirty seconds, and when your time is complete. I do have a deeper clue, too. And, uh, so I'll start with Diana Wood. Followed by Kenny Martinez.
Diana Wood. Uh, Sunday night, uh, there was an intersection taken over, uh, low eight take over, circle burn, all, all, and, and from Central all the way down into San Diego, uh, was running for a concrete. And, uh, I don't know what time it was, I, I couldn't hear it, but everybody else, you never heard. And, you know, this, this kind of stuff, it's gotta, uh, stop. I don't, I don't know, it's not, it's very, uh, uh, it's totally ridiculous. And then, uh, it was last night, Monday, um, oh, and, uh, there was a Ford pickup with a camper blocked Central Avenue, Federal, this is sliced off. So, anybody coming down the hill didn't see us until we got right on top of it. So, they threw their, threw their... Monday night, the, uh, crossing gates at, um, Broadway and, um, Lemon Grove Avenue and north Lemon Grove Avenue came down. And they were down for quite a while. Uh, I understand there were some people that, uh, that got out of their cars and pulled their arms so they were up. And, uh, it was, uh, a very dangerous thing for people to do because, I don't know, the cars were still running, but, you know, they're coming through there. They don't break very quick. Uh, there's a little bit of momentum to them. I don't know if they could lock up their wheels or if they lock up their, uh, sore wheels. Um, but it, it took them...
Thirty seconds?
MTS why it was to, uh, show them the, fix them.
Thank you. Next we have Kenny Martinez, followed by Ann Sackleton.
Before my time starts, I thought, you know, why this isn't working? Because that's kind of rude and destructive and why it shouldn't be working. Okay, now my time starts. Um, I'm here today for the same thing, although I'm adding something new. And this is about the rec center, the bathrooms open. Um, I wanna remind, uh, Ms. Mendoza that she said on March twenty-ninth, I have a lot of emails I could read, but I wanted to go to something else. I'm now the city manager today. She's very positive about doing it, but her on board, I'm really hopeful that it's going to happen. That was March twenty-ninth. This is in reference to the bathrooms being open at the rec center, I believe. And then, um, uh, on another email, Ms. Mendoza said, remember, we can't open on Sunday even from a lease agreement with literary charters up at the end of the school year. But in the meantime, we can start opening Saturdays by the end of school. Still hasn't happened. Shame on you, shame on you. It, it's, it's appalling that you guys haven't addressed it. Okay, now I wanna go to something else that became apparent to me because I injured myself and I was on crutches, a short time in a wheelchair. And all of a sudden I realized there's no wheelchair ramp. The law says you have to have a wheelchair ramp. Now I remember a long time ago, I believe this driveway used to be the wheelchair ramp.
Yes.
Yes, and it was taken away. Get it back, quit parking there. So... So, I called Lemon Grove to find out who was in charge of ADA compliance, and I spoke, I was given Mr. Uh, Aolo Romero, and he told me to call the Department of Insurance. Yeah, I'm waiting for eye contact, like, teachers expect of their students, same thing. Anyway, um, he told me to contact the Department of Insurance. Well, I didn't think that was correct, but I did anyway, and, um, of course, they said, no, you don't call it, so I contacted the county ADA compliance coordinator, and he showed me the law, that all entities are required to have a person designated to ADA compliance. So, I called back again, spoke to Mr. Romero, and he said that he wasn't in charge, he was supposed to refer to the Department of Insurance. So, uh, I know that you can respond to me, because you've done it in the past, when someone was up here speaking about, and, uh, uh, I want to be given a name tonight, that who is responsible for ADA compliance, because I wanna meet with them at, uh, the office, and give them my list of things that are not ADA compliant, including Lemon Grove, starting with getting the wheelchair ramp back, what they give, so I need, I need a name. And I know you can respond to me, or Rockell, you always said you can't, but I've seen you respond to many times, so if you like the people.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Ann Stapleton, followed by Drissa Rosiak Prophet, um, the public staff will follow up with you. Ann Stapleton, followed by Drissa Rosiak Prophet. While Ann Stapleton, uh.
I got all kinds of information.
Approaching, uh, the, the, um, podium, I would like to remind the audience about the point, and so please, please, no shouting, this is a business meeting. And so, as I stated, the public staff will follow up with Kenny Martinez, we will continue on with our public comments, with Ann Stapleton, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the council and city staff. I'm a twenty, my husband and I are 21-year residents in Lemon Grove, we love the city, we have, can you move away, and we just really care about the city, and, um, so tonight I come with feedback, and a suggestion, so, like, my feedback is, I wanted to give props to Home Start. Sometimes all you hear are the prisons, and I just wanted to bring something positive. Back in the beginning of the year, I, as, my husband and I are both pastors of the church in Lemon Grove, and we often help people who are underserved, and we had a mother and her son who were, who ended up losing their housing, and so I was calling every agency, 411, everything, and I ended up on Home Start, not thinking of them first, but I should have, and Abdullah was awesome, he came out, he was on my front lawn, he was in a couple days, um, after a couple conferences, he brought a nurse, a deputy, and he did vaccinations, and enrollment, he was right there on my front lawn, was this mother and her son, and then he helped me, um, I had to do footwork to find a group home, but I got him into a group home, and they got three months of rental assistance, so they could get on their feet, and I just wanted to give that feedback, I don't know if you're, if you're, if you have the link up, but that was, really, I was very impressed. And then secondly, my suggestion, um, my husband and I lead a group of clergy in the city, that's basically faith leaders that want to get together and work with other organizations to improve the city, where we'd love to live, work, and play, and, um, one of the suggestions that came up among the pastors was to add an invocation to the city council meetings. Now, I think there used to be one, I'm not sure why it was removed, and maybe there's good reason that I don't know about, but, um, it was a suggestion, and I explained that I would bring it to you. We, of course, know that not everybody believes in God, and, but what we'd like to do is include all faiths, and have just a blessing, uh, and set the tone for there's a meeting, and initially, it would also get more community members here to, um, to be part of the city business, so, um, if you choose to adopt this suggestion, I would be willing to put together the schedule and contact all the different faith leaders and committees, and put together the question. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Drissa Rosiak Prophet, um, followed by, thank you, please.
My awareness as a council official, I have come before you regarding collaboration of the common on bathrooms for two years and three months, and I have asked that the MTS council representative contact me three times at half-city council meetings, and I have not been contacted. Is there a problem? Why have I not been contacted? Facts and data, Madam Mayor, is what you like and demand, so the fact is, no response, so please speak with your representative and make this happen. Why is it so difficult for this council to work with volunteer residents and volunteer groups that give of their time and talents to make our city the best it can be? These volunteers and groups are getting the work done that you neglect, and these are the facts and the data. The only thing facts and data can't measure is what you will do with it. What will you do with my comment tonight, Madam Mayor? Also, tonight, I'd like to talk with regards to bullying and harassment, and it is happening in Lemon Grove by our council members, and it must stop, and it must stop now. Kindness matters, and bullying and harassment achieves nothing, so I urge all of you to think before you speak and before you act, because we, the residents, are watching you very intensely, and I will not continue to be bullied or harassed any further. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, the appropriate staff will follow up with you. Next we have Jessica Haradia.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Haradia, and I would like to start off with two small comments just on our public, um, presentation. Um, I would love to see the school board add the rec center to that bond, and see them join us in putting money towards opening the rec center full-time. Um, as far as the sheriff's presentation, I'd also like to, um, reiterate again to you that I'd like to see the initial program initiated in, in Lemon Grove, it's very effective in other cities, and it can be effective here, it would be real-time information, direct into your phone, it's better than having to go log in and search through, um, so I'd like to see that added to what we presented tonight. Um, and then I'd just like to give, um, the public, as well as the city, um, a chance to join us at the Second Annual Free on Read, Trayvon Harris Basketball Tournament this Saturday, registration starts at 8:00 AM, games start at 9:00. We have, um, a, a book signing going on, and, um, uh, Dr. Weber will be here, she's gonna give a small speech at the beginning, and the book signing, the books, there are a hundred, a hundred books to the first kids that show up, 100 kids, and there'll be free t-shirts for the first to see players sign. Um, if anybody would like more information, I have the flyer here, in Spanish and English. Um, I'd also like to, um, mention that La Mesa is doing the very first and only East County Celebration of Juneteenth, and that will be held on Juneteenth, which is a Sunday, and it goes from 12:00 to 4:00, there'll be great vendors, it's a celebration, Dan Farts, Found Taliesin History, um, you're all like it, thank you.
Thank you so very much, and that completes our public comment portion of the meeting. We are now moving on to our consent calendar, and I'd like to, um, see if we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Madam Mayor, I just, I'd just like to make a comment on, uh, one meeting that signifies our street relocation project, we are proving tonight, uh, $2 million dollars, that's pretty significant, um, and that's, that's for a year's worth of, um, street relocation, anybody that looks at the list, it's a mix, not just of major thoroughfares, but there's public sects and, and individual, um, streets somewhere, I'm making city turn notes, so I'm gonna shut up.
Uh, thank you, uh, for pointing out, um, the investment of, um, 1.2 million dollars in street pavings. So, um, with that said, we do have a motion, and I second one before, I'd like to, um, step aside, city clerk, to call the roll. Mayor Potemben Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Gasol.
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mayor Vazquez. Aye. Motion carries. Uh, thank you. Next is item number two, uh, the second reading of zoning ordinance amendment ZA2-200-0001, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and to turn this over to our city attorney, Kristen Santi, uh, to present the staff report.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council, um, this is the second reading of zoning ordinance amendment ZA2-200-0001, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Uh, this item was originally considered and adopted by unanimous vote at the city council on May 17th, 2022. If adopted, this ordinance will become effective in 30 days. Uh, this is the second reading of the proposed ordinance, and I will read it in full, which will conclude my staff report. This is, uh, the, the, the introduction for its second reading, zoning ordinance amendment 17.16.040C, 17.16.050C, 17.16.070C, and 17.24.060D1 of the Lemon Grove municipal code regulating accessory dwelling units. Phew! That's all I have to say, and I would, I would give it back to you, Madam Mayor, for any discussion.
Uh, before I, um, turn to our city council meeting members, I will check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips. We don't. Uh, thank you so very much, and, um, now I will start with Councilmember Gasol, to see if you have any questions, uh, a maximum of two questions.
No, no, I, I think we discussed it, uh, adequately on the previous meetings.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
No further questions.
Thank you, Mayor Potemben Jones.
I don't have a question, but, but you have a statement, um, I think most of you know that I'm, I'm a, I'm a big advocate for accessory dwelling units. Um, however, um, this that's before us has been thrust upon us by the state, I'm concerned with setbacks, I'm concerned with parking and what they'll do to neighborhoods, and I know that this council has no other choice, but somebody has to make a protest vote tonight at that meeting, so, um, uh, and it's just, I don't believe Sacramento should have the right to tell us how our community should look. Uh, zoning ordinance laws were enacted by the courts saying that a community had the right to determine its own quality of life, that's how they justified it, and the state has taken it beyond that and out of our hands, so that we don't have any say in our quality of life, and this is one of those times, so, um, again, um, I know you guys have to do what you have to do, but I, I will not vote for this, and that is my protest term.
Uh, thank you so very much, and I do not have any comments or questions at this time, but I will look back and see if there are any additional, uh, questions or comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Gasol.
Yeah, I, I, I really appreciate Councilmember Jones's comment, the, the state has taken away quite a lot of, of, uh, local discretion, and made it harder for us to protect our communities. I'm, I'm wondering if there is any value, um, in, if, if we didn't pass this, would, would that send any, would that send a message? My, my sense is that we're probably better off to craft something like what we have, and, you know, basically take control of, of the tiger to the extent that we can, uh, as opposed to resisting it, but I'd, I'd be interested to know if there's any other, any, any other perspectives on that, because I, I think it would be good to, to send, uh, some sort of protest to whoever needs, needs to hear it. I think Tony Atkins is tired of hearing my opinions on this topic. Uh, I agree with her on 95% of the issues, and definitely not on this one, that's the Senate pro temp who proposes a lot of the housing legislation, but, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just interested if anybody else has a perspective on this, I, I, I'm sensing that probably the smart thing to do is to go with what we have, craft something intelligent that gives us some measure of control, make the best of the situation that we have, but I'm, I'm open to the idea that, that a protest might, might have some merit.
Councilmember Gasol, um, what you have, what you have before you is actually what state law is, so we have to comply with what state law prescribes for us, so we didn't go, you can go beyond state law, you can't go below state law, so if, if the council does not pass it tonight, we will then not be in compliance with our housing element, and then when we're found not in compliance with our housing element, the state can come in and pretty much take away any authority that you currently have for any housing discretion, so it would be important to do it. And I, I agree, that the one-size-fits-all is not a strategy that we should have statewide, but that's what the assembly members in the senate and the, um, uh, governor has said, that statewide, everybody has the same roles, um, as San Francisco and Berkeley, um, so we have to comply with this.
That's, that's, that's pretty much what I, I was thinking, so we should continue the work we've been doing with leading cities, and continue to be in contact with, with, with our, our legislators. And, uh, actually, I've talked to Brian Jones on this subject, and he seems to agree with me, um, but, that's our state senator, uh, or it used to be, I'm not sure, but, but, in any event, thank you for, for, for the, for the input, and, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Jones's comments, even though I think I'll go ahead and support this measure, because I think we're better off, we're better off working with the tools we have to work with.
Uh, thank you, um, and I see that we do not have any additional, uh, comments here. Uh, yes, I'll turn it over to Mayor Potemben.
Councilmember Gasol, I don't suggest it be voted in a way than, other than the way you did before, and I, I'm, I'm happy that you guys would let me, indulge me in making the protest vote on this one, uh, and, 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 yeah, we don't have a choice, we really don't, but, we can, we could, and, and I'm not in favor of any, you know, getting involved in state politics by, you know, getting involved in every little thing that's going on in the state capital, but in this particular case, we could do a resolution opposing these, these, um, these kinds of oversteps by the, you know, by the state government into our local decisions and, and, and our determining our quality of life, so that, I mean, that's, that's one thing we can do, and stay in compliance, if that, if that makes sense, so.
Thank you, and, uh, do we have any additional comments? At this time, we do not, and so I'll, uh, freely, uh, have the motion.
I'll, um, I'll move approval.
I'll, I'll second it.
And I'll ask our city clerk to call the, uh, Councilmember Mendoza.
Aye.
Councilmember Gasol.
Aye.
Mayor Potemben Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Vazquez.
Aye.
He won, motion carries. Thank you. Item number three is the second reading of zoning ordinance amendment ZA2-200-0002, density bonus ordinance, and so I'll turn this one over to our city attorney, Kristen Santi, to present the staff report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council, much like the, the, the.
Much like the, 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 the EDU ordinance, this is the second reading of, uh, the ordinance. This item was originally considered and adopted by unanimous vote at the city council on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. If adopted, the ordinance will become effective in thirty days. Uh, so I will do the second reading now, which is, uh, the introduction for its second reading of ordinance four five zero, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lemon Grove, California, amending a zoning ordinance title seventeen, section seventeen dot twenty-four dot one hundred of the Lemon Grove Municipal Code regulating housing density bonuses in the city of Lemon Grove, consistent with state law. That concludes my staff report.
Uh, thank you so very much, and I'll check in with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker's left.
We do not.
Thank you, and now I'll check in with our council members to see if we have any questions or comments.
No questions or comments.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Uh, thank you, um, Mayor Potem Jones. Uh, and I do not have any questions or comments at this time, and so, uh, with that said, I'd like to see if we have a motion?
I'll move through.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, um, we do have a motion and a second. Uh, so it's the city clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Gasol?
Aye.
Mayor Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Bassett?
Aye.
Three one, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four is the city council priorities and work plan for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And so I'll turn this over to Lydia Romero, our city manager, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. It's my pleasure, and I'll ask the city clerk to advance the slides for me. So, um, at your workshop, um, we held a priority setting workshop on April twenty-sixth that was facilitated, um, by our professional facilitator that took all of the formulation of your conversations and created sort of a priority list. Um, uh, staff has been instructed to come back with estimated cost, staff time, and estimated timeframe to get the project done. Um, so we're here tonight to discuss your priorities and quickly adopt your priorities so we can put them into the budget that we present to, your final budget that we present to you on the twenty-first of June. Next slide. In line with council direction that came from the workshop, you had asked that these priorities be achievable in the fiscal year, uh, have high impact in the fiscal year, and can stay in line with current staff resources, um, in the fiscal year. So what is reported, the council tonight, is staff's recommendation that aligns with these three, um, directives. Next slide. How we got to the group that we have, we, um, are presenting tonight. So your council priorities, um, were grouped, the data was grouped together, um, one from the council discussion that you had prior to the actual workshop on the twenty-sixth. Then we created what they call the multi-voting exercise system. So the city council members looked at the actionable items and voted with them with some, some dots. We call that the dot exercise. And we actually invited the community that was in attendance to do the same thing and, um, do the active results. So we had, um, both sets of data, myself and the consultant. Um, combining those sets of data and attached to the staff report is actually the full list of the multi, um, multi-voting stats that both the residents did and the city council has done. And then it was, it's broken down even further, if you want to take a look at, in each one of the stra, uh, strategic focus areas on where those numbers live. So the, in the next slide, you will see the staff recommended a council priorities, um, including the estimated budget costs, um, estimated staff time, and then estimated timeframe. An estimated timeframe is, is, is it going to happen in the fall, is it going to happen in the summer? It gives us a sense of where things are going to go. So this, again, is yours, four strategic focus areas, uh, public streets and sidewalks, community life, diversification of city revenue, and public safety and homelessness. Next slide. So first, we're going to focus in on the strategic focus area of public streets and sidewalks. So based on the voting, both with the city council and with the residents, it pretty much mirrored everything that you wanted to do in this sort, in this strategic focus. So staff is recommending, again, continue improving the input, streets that are in poor condition. Um, currently, we have allocated, um, three hundred fifty thousand dollars this fiscal year. Um, staff is requesting that you allocate about two hundred fifty thousand dollars this current, uh, the upcoming fiscal year to do that. Um, it will take staff about fifteen to twenty-five hours to do real street analysis, prepare their plans and reports, and put them in the bidding documents and contract management. And that happens at different times of the, the process. Um, and this will be an ongoing item that the council directs us to do, um, especially if we get some additional grant money, or there's additional monies that we can put towards that during the fiscal year. Our carryover item is the PMP, or the pavement management plan, and upgrading that pavement management plan. We are doing a carryover allocation from last fiscal year of seventy-five thousand. Again, this will be about twenty to thirty-five hours for staff to prepare the bid plans, council reports, contracts management, work with the consultant that does the PMP, and we hope to get that out to bid and, um, um, ready to go by summer, so the council can then, by late fall, early December, early winter, um, have the final report that they can adopt that we can use for the upcoming street sections. And hopefully, with all this work that we're doing, our pavement index will increase just a tad bit. On the strategic focus area of traffic calming, um, continue to do the, just to treat the strategic traffic calming strategies. Right now, the costs are unknown, but we have, the council recalls several meetings ago, the council approved Caltrans grant that will actually, um, help us improve the safety around schools. Um, and so that is a, a sort of planning document that we're going to use, that funding document that will help us, um, hold down some additional of grants from Caltrans, um, and from Sanday. Um, that, that is going to be completed by the summer of twenty-two. Um, and, um, it'll take fifteen to twenty-five hours for grant management, contract preparation, city council reports, and contract management. And I'm hoping to bring to council in the summer a contract for the consultant that will then do the work for us. And then lastly is the Vision Zero Plan, as was discussed previously, is to bring to council, um, an implementation plan to do the Vision Zero. Um, staff estimated this to be about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, and, um, we will have to bid, but on our plan is to call Circulate San Diego, because they seem to be the subject experts in this, in this matter. Next slide. Staff recommends also to, again, carry over your economic development strategic plan, so we have a single focus on how we're going to do, uh, economic development in the city opposed to having five to seven different strategies. We have one single strategy that is cohesive with the community, cohesive with our elected officials. Again, this is a carryover amount of about fifty thousand dollars, um, from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, this, this is, um, for staff to prepare the bid proposal or the RFP, do the contract preparation, city council reports, um, and contract management. Again, that will be out to bid, um, projected to be summer of twenty-two. And then going into the budget expenditures, uh, this was a little tricky to codify because it's not an actual report, or it's not an actual doing item, uh, but, uh, both high in the city council priority and the community priority was giving city staff additional equipment, technology, and resources to improve its processes, um, both online and both in person. And so staff is suggesting, because we don't know what the costs are going to be for that, staff is suggesting that we, we prepare a report for council to do an inventory of what we have, an inventory of what we need, and an inventory of, of how we're going to do better processing or process improvements, and hopefully get that report, um, around the February twenty-three timeline in, in tandem with mid-year budget. So if there's, um, improved revenue, we can then allocate those resources to help do some of those improvements, um, uh, that are technology-driven or, or stuff. I, I'd like to wait until I actually have, um, a director of public works on board and my community development manager, because they will help, um, shape and frame what type of technology and process of improvement that we need. And the last one was to improve staff pay and non-monetized benefit. Those actually were very high on the community's list as well as the council's list. So as you will see in the next item, staff is proposing, um, a, a salary increase for our miscellaneous employees as well as adhering to the MOU with our fire association. Um, and, and really, that's going to take about five hours to prepare, um, the staff report and then do some of the internal operations if council does approve that, um, moving forward in our current budget. And that will be done, um, immediately, um, depending on what council's direction is. Next slide. So related, related to that strategic focus item as we get to that, um, that slide. Thank you. Um, there were two items that staff is not recommending at the time, even though they were high priority items. One is actually a resident suggestion to hire a grant writer or, writer or manager. We currently have someone on staff that spends about forty-five percent of their time grant writing, um, report writing, um, doing everything that needs to get done with all of our grant, grant stuff, because when, if you're successful in getting a grant, you've got quarterly reports, you've got yearly reports, and he's spending about forty-five percent of his time doing that. So staff doesn't really think we have the capacity to do this. The council feels we want to, um, expand his time and focus more on grants to seventy-five percent. Um, that's a different conversation, and I may ask council to come back with at least another staff person to absorb some of the duties that, other duties he's doing, such as, um, all of our environmental trash, organics, recycling, um, aspects. He is also the secondary liaison with, um, Home Start and our homeless, so I'm going to need somebody to pick up that slack if we move, if we move his time to about seventy-five percent of, of grant management and grant writing. And he's been successful in getting several grants. We've gotten several DOJ grants, we've gotten several, um, uh, cow recycling grants. Um, he, we, we put that before council, and so, um, something for you to consider. Um, the economic development aspect, again, I think this is related to the, the priority about improvement of technology. If we can get that aspect and that report done first, then we can look at how does this process improvement improve what is going on in our planning department to allow, again, maybe online submittals, um, um, working with our folks with better technology to allow some better process improvement. Because right now, we're working, we really are probably technology-wise in the mid-eighties with our technology. Next slide, please. In the strategic focus area of public, um, staff is recommending, and I think the council, uh, expressed a desire to have a full motor officer. So bringing that will cost us about two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars in this contract. If council, council can revisit this every single year if they choose, um, as whether this item continues or not continues, um, or it can, it can continue indefinitely until the council decides it is no longer needed. Um, and, and so that, that is, um, or the council, that can start as soon as we start the fiscal year and notify the sheriff's department that, um, we are adding a new person to our sheriff's complement in Lemon Grove. The next strategic focus area, the next slide, is, um, communications. So this is community life is the strategic focus area. So hard to say that word. Um, communication specialists, increasing our communication specialist from half-time to full-time. Again, this was another pilot program that the council, um, took on as a priority last fiscal year. Um, I, you know, maybe I'm biased, but I think it is successful. We've had a stronger presence both on Instagram and on Facebook. Um, we've, we've been able to produce a weekly newsletter, um, I mean, a monthly newsletter since, um, September moving forward. Um, it would be nice to have this communication specialist, um, be able to do more things like improve our website, um, be able to, um, come to certain events, so we have some, um, photographic evidence of it. So I think it'd be very, very beneficial for us to have that. Um, it looks like, and this was an estimate of approximately fifty thousand dollars, which is a fully loaded, um, salary, salary, benefits, and retirement cost. Currently, our part-time person is only getting an hourly rate. It's, it's confined to twenty hours a week. This would increase him to thirty-seven and a half hours, as well as giving him full benefits, or giving his position full benefits. And the next is commence broadcasting of city council meeting for, be able to livestream. That was, um, moderately high on the council list, very high on the community list. Staff recommends to take a step back to, we don't, um, we're, we don't spend good money after bad money, but perhaps if, if council agrees with staff's recommendation, is that staff prepares a report that we bring back to city council with a detailed proposal of, of a variety of how to bring live streaming to city council from the most Cadillac, um, um, recommendation to a very basic recommendation. And then that will allow us to understand the wiring in this building, um, the, the internet access in this community, because we will have to improve our computer system. So we'll come back with a better refined cost, because right now, um, we, we, although this would be funded by one of our special funds, staff is estimating that we're probably going to need about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and this is a guestment for contingency fund for this building. I don't know if this building was built in the nineteen-seventies, whether this contains asbestos, what kind of wiring we have, um, what kind of, of aspects. And once we start opening the walls to do construction and adding cameras, um, those costs to rem, remediate or remedy or fix whatever is broken cannot be put on the special fund. So I'd rather come with reports, and we know what we're talking about, and, um, and have a better sense of costs where they come from. And then the recreation center, I think the speaker spoke to it early, looking at a feasibility of opening the recreation center on Sundays, um, and then come back to council in a fairly short order in the summer, so we know what those costs are. Um, it'll be about seven to ten hours to research. It'll take a look at what is our, um, our cost for staffing it with two individuals, what is our cost for electricity, what is our cost, um, for rentals, because the decision will be, do we, do we cancel the rentals that currently have rentals for the Saturday exposition? Do we start it during the summer, when there's a lot of vacations? Do we wait and start when the school isn't inside, when most kids are at home? So those will be some of the report recommendations that, that staff will bring back to council in the summer of this year. And next slide. So that is a lot of information thrown at you in a very short period of time, so I'm hoping if the city council can sort of discuss staff's recommendations, um, and then whatever is discussed and decided will be adopted, if the council could adopt those changes, and we can incorporate those into the final budget. And then, as, as always, your work plan will be part of the budget book as well as up on the website, and us council has reflected the back of every printed agenda for each one of our meetings. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions if we can pass.
Uh, thank you so much for that presentation. I will check with our city clerk, uh, to see if we have any speakers left. We do not. Um, we do not have any speakers left at this time for, um, this particular agenda item. And so I will start with Councilmember Gasol. Two questions, please.
No, I don't think I have a question. I, I'll probably have a comment later on.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, I don't really have any questions, because I, I think you captured everything really well that we discussed at the whole city meeting, but I, I do have a couple of comments, so, um, so those are the comments.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Jones?
Yeah, I actually have two, two questions. Well, you have two questions. Uh, one, uh, what's the total reserve, both unallocated and unallocated? Just so you hear, is it eleven, is it eleven million?
Not all.
No, all of that is actual, um, reserve funding. Um, the projected, and we'll go with some on the next item, um, but the projected fund balance given in the fiscal year twenty-three will be, um, eleven point eight million, um, dollars, again, depending on the economic factors, if there's a bit, um, a better view in the midterm, um, with that. when that comes through. However, of that eleven million, there's probably only about one point five to two that would be actual liquid assets that we would recommend to be looked at. The rest of it is in some investment accounts, as well as the general fund reserve requirements that they have to keep, which is only five million dollars.
Okay. And then my second, second question is for, for Lydia. You know, I, I met our new communications officer, and I was rather impressed with this, with what he brings to, to the job. Could we share that with, with?
You're talking a little too soon, so what do you mean?
Well, his experience.
Oh, he comes very well, he comes from, we're very, the person we have in the position right now is very well qualified for the position. Um, staff normally, we normally, when we talk about positions, we don't talk about the, but he's very well qualified. He is a, you know, not retired, but former, former Navy personnel. So, he served our country. But he also worked with the UN during the communications at the, at the United Nations. So, he comes very well qualified and, and around the world in doing all of their communications. He's a very impressive young man.
I think that's important. So, thank you, thank you for sharing.
Thank you so very much. And I do not have any questions at this time. So, questions and comments, this is our second round. And I'll turn it over to the councilmember Gasco.
I'm thankful for the work that, that our city staff has put into this. I think it reflects the priorities that the council and that the public have, have expressed pretty, pretty well. And the thing I like most about it is that there isn't much on it. I think it has less, fewer items than, than previous years, which I think is really smart, because, because I think we're, we're at a point where we're better off to have fewer targets and to do a better, and to do a better job with the targets. But my feeling is that when, when we talk about staff positions and should we have more of this, is that we really need more people first, before we can have an intelligent discussion. I mean, I, I'm open to the idea that a grant, that, that, that we should have somebody who's doing more than forty-five percent of their job on grants. But right now, we don't even have enough people, period, in the city. And, and so, priority one has to be to get, to get some people for the positions that we already know we need people for, and also to make sure that our, our staff are compensated in a, in a way that makes them see this as, as a permanent career job. We need more emphasis on permanent career jobs. Because it's not just, it's not just people that the city has lost. It's also, we've also lost institutional memory with, with some of the, the losses. And so, so we need to, we need to work on, we need to work on hiring as well as retention and, and as well as spreading the fact that, that in many ways, Lemon Grove is in fact a good place to work. So, so I, I'm basically going to say that I, I support these, these, these goals. Though, there's one that I, I, I have to say that with some reluctance, I, I support the goal of looking into the, what it would take to televise meetings. I, I strongly suspect that when people said they wanted to televise meetings, they weren't actually considering the costs. And, and I don't know if the average person in Lemon Grove would say, "Oh, let's spend this money on televising council meetings instead of spending it on a safety officer, or instead of spending it on keeping bathrooms clean in parks." So, I, but, but I do, I do like the idea of looking into it. I like the idea of seeing what's realistic. I like the idea of looking at some choices. I can tell you, I'll probably be going for, for used Fiat instead of the Cadillac. But, but that's, that's, that's me. But, but, but seriously, I, I do think that some reality around costs and, 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 you know, has to, has to be brought into it. Although I, I like the idea of people being able to watch council meetings. I do, I like that idea. I think that, I, I think when you, when you look at the costs, I think certain, certain, you know, certain realism might set in about, is it really more important than other things that the money can be spent on? But, but overall, I think these are, I think, I think that these, I think that the list reflects the conversation. I think it reflects what the public wants, what the councils said they want. And I, and I like the fact that it's short. I like the fact that it looks like something we can actually do. And some of these are things that would get us closer to other things. Like the, the, the idea of a, of a plan for economic development, that's a great idea. But it has to start with finding the, the consultant that can write the plan. So, some of these are things that can lead to other things later on, step by step. And that's probably, probably all I need to say on that for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza.
I want to address the, sorry. Broadcasting of council meetings with live streaming also. Right now, there, there, well, there should be about four-hundred thousand dollars in, in the, I believe it's Fund Twenty-Six, the fake one. And that, that would cover, well, I think we'll, we'll collect money next year. We usually collect around fifty thousand a year. And, you know, that should cover the cost of the equipment. And once we have the equipment, we have the equipment. And we can only use that fund for that, that purpose. We can't use it for streets or sidewalks, unfortunately. And then, I was wondering if it also covered operating costs or only capital costs?
It, it only covers capital costs. So, operating costs would have to be absorbed into the general fund.
Okay. And that might be a, a job for our new communications specialist, I thought. Anyway, that's the conversation for a minute. But, and I did want to share that I heard from a resident who is a teacher at Rosemont College, and he, he saw this amount. And he, he said that they, he would like to share what they did to livestream classes at Rosemont College. So, I have a list that I'll share with the city manager. And I'm just urging that we also check how, how other cities are doing it. And I know this is just, this two-hundred-and-fifty is just a worst-case scenario that you just have to throw in there to make sure we understand that this is going to cost some money. But I'm, I'm just urging us to look into other, you know, what, what other people are doing.
And, 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 Councilmember Mendoza, just the other fact, I, I did speak to the city manager of Santee and also the city manager of La Mesa, who's on it. And, and unlike a classroom, if we go to livestream, that becomes our official record. So, we have to make sure that our official record is captured, shared, stored. So, our equipment is a little bit different than perhaps teachings and going livestream teaching, because that's not necessarily codified for future use. And so, there's a little bit of a different mechanics with live streaming or meetings, because now, if you remember, you know, I, I'm in this business long enough to remember where we actually had verbatim minutes, and we had a, a city clerk that took longhand, because most meetings, you had to come to a city council meeting to hear what, what was going on. That has evolved over the course of my thirty-some-year career, where it went to SoundCloud and then online streaming or tape delay of council. And those then became the official record of the city council. So, so there's a little different hiring threshold that we have to adhere to, which is why the cost is a little bit different. And, and I believe in councilman, Mayor Burton Jones, may correct me, but I think La Mesa, Santee spent close to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars fully to get everything up live for their Santee TV. Okay, I appreciate you explaining that, because I, I don't really understand it, and I'm sure a lot of other folks don't either.
The other thing I wanted to comment on was the, the feasibility study for opening the recreation center on Saturdays. And I'm, I'm sorry that Ms. Martinez left. I'm going to send her email, so we can address, I can address her comments. But, yeah, like she said, I did reach out and talk to the city manager, and you were enthusiastic, correct?
Okay.
And you suggested, your suggestion was that we talk about this at our goal-setting in April. And we did, and my other councilmembers seemed enthusiastic. I, I then did want to have a separate staff report on, on the matter, but you convinced me that it was better use of staff time to include it in our goal-setting tonight. And, you know, you weren't sure when we were going to actually do that, but you did say that it would be at least by tonight's meeting. So, I appreciate that. I should have let Ms. Martinez know that that was the reason for the delay and why it didn't happen as quickly as we had hoped that it, that it would. But it's happening now. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Mendoza, as the staff member that would be carrying this report, I appreciate the ability to have a little bit of wiggle room to get this done too quickly. Had, had I not had a mass exodus of my staff leadership, this probably would have done, we would have been really early in July to get this done. But I, I am now the public works director, as you'll see in a later item, as well as working in community development, so, and IT. So, I'm hoping to get more staff, as Councilmember Gasco has suggested, so I have some ability to do what hired me to do with some of these, you know, mission-critical, community-focused projects. I thank you, Mayor Burton Jones.
Well, we, we started saying, you know, we're, those last two years have been pretty flush with one-time monies. And I would just caution everyone to be careful when we start to spend those one-time monies and, and be sure that we don't get ourselves caught into a cycle of spending, you know, ongoing funds with one-time monies. That's, that's always a tendency with, with any, any government body that I've been on, a school district down here. And coming back to, to those, the, the, the one-time monies and, and this new flushness that we find, so, is that a work? I'll just make that up. And the reason why I ask what, you know, what are unallocated, what the real money we have to spend is, and, and, you know, it's the old PTA president and me, and that, it says that you need to spend this year's money on this year's people. You know, you never, you just never hoarded money in those kinds of organizations. If you do the fundraising, you spend it on those year, those people. And so, we're kind of in that same situation here, and my feeling is, is the same here, is we, we shouldn't be squirreling this away. I mean, we need to have a reserve, which we have as a reserve policy. But we need to look at the, the needs that we've kind of neglected for a while and, and in terms of, of, of one-time expenditures and, and make those expenditures carefully. Now, some of that stuff, we can do in terms of researching things like the rec, you know, so we could spend that money researching the rec, so that we have a real number on, on what's going to be required of the general fund, because there are the, the general fund requirement there. And we can spend this time, we can spend these one-time monies to do that kind of stuff. The, the streaming is another area where we can look, you know, we can use these one-time monies to at least set ourselves up and again, get, allocate staff time. Or even if we have to hire a consultant, it's, you know, the consultant to give us some realistic numbers on, on what's going to be required in order to make that happen. I have a lot of people that, that say they're watching the streams, so I think it's important. And I, I think, I mean, everything, everything's a priority, and one can flip a coin sometime and decide which one is, is more important than the other. But I, I think that's one that, that we, we have money put aside for, for, for the infrastructure. And we should, we should at least do, do a feasibility study to see what it will take, you know, what kind of hit it will take on the general fund. So, that's, to me, that's where it's going to be. As far as, I, I like what I see on here. There's two things that I, I, I really want to strongly advocate for. One is this, that we spend the money on the fire truck and just spend it upfront. We have, we have the money, we have the cash money. We have the money in the bank. Let's just spend the money and buy the truck.
That's going to be in the budget discussion in the next item, sir.
Okay. I, well, I'm just using this time to reinforce that. I'll do it again later. And, and, I maybe forgot what the other one was. Oh, and, and I like the fact that we're doing two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the, those streets under the twenty-five PCI. I'm very excited that I saw Taft, Olive Taft is now on the, on that, was on that contract that we just approved. I don't live on Taft, I don't have any friends on Taft, but it certainly has always been a street that caught my attention when I was around the neighborhood, so. And that makes me very happy. I would like to advocate for, like we did the last time, for another hundred thousand dollars there. Do, match what we did last year, do three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And I would suggest that when, by doing that, that those lower streets, those streets under the twenty-five, we, 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 we up our index pretty significantly by taking care of those at the bottom. So, I would, I would just like to advocate for that. I think, I think people have been asking us for that. I know in my twenty years, that's been top priority for twenty years. And, and I think we should make it a top priority, you know, for, for these one-time monies. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I'd like to start by thanking staff and everyone involved in putting together the workshop, so that we could have a very robust discussion regarding what we can do with the funding that we have. Realistically, what can we do, along with the amount of staff that we have? Huge priority here is that we, we get some folks in here to work for the city. Because we can put our plan together, but if we don't have enough staff to do the work, then the needs that have been outlined will not be met. And so, that's a huge priority. But also, giving the reports to council regarding the needs that have been outlined, not just by city council members, but by the public, is a priority as well. So that we can make decisions as we, as good and thoughtful decisions as we are as we move forward. So, those are my comments regarding this particular agenda item. And I think for this item, we probably need a motion and a second.
It was to adopt, it was to adopt something. We don't have a reservation. You normally don't adopt your, your priorities via resolution. You just adopt them as a minute order. One question I have there, if you will allow, councilmember, Mayor Burton Jones put on the floor, an additional hundred thousand dollars for streets. And I'm looking to the council to see if that is something that they would like to support, and we could add that to the plan.
I'm thinking that's a budget discussion. I think the council priority is spending staff time to evaluate needs, and then that work translates into budget discussion. So, I would, I, I would add my set two cents to the idea of assessing the needs, the street priorities in the, in the work plan and that, in the actual budget discussion of, to come up in, in, in relation to that one question.
And so, we carry that over to our next agenda item, which is number five, that discussion. And with item number four, I think we have a motion and a second.
I would move that we adopt a resolution approving the priorities and work plan for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second that.
We do have a motion and a second. We do have a motion and a second. I will, I'll turn this over to our city clerk to call it off.
Mayor Potem Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Gastel?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mayor Gastel?
Aye.
What is your motion, please?
Thank you so very much. Item number five is the FY twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three general fund budget draft. General fund draft budget. I said that backwards. Um, and so I'll um turn this over to Joseph Ware, who is our finance manager, prevent, uh, to prevent, but to prevent the staff report. And uh we have been preempted with a part of the discussion. You are aware of um one item that is uh, that has been elevated during our previous discussion, but we will um, um be very attentive to the entire presentation before we dive into some of the responses to uh the conversation that's been placed in our previous agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, all of council members. Uh, tonight, we're gonna bring to you the draft uh general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, starting July one. I want to leave.
Can you leave the phones on a little bit here so we can take?
Yeah, it's getting a little dark. Thank you.
Is it that one?
Nope.
No.
There you go.
Thank you.
I should start paying Jessica.
I'm the closest.
So, great, I think, tonight, we're gonna have two different discussion points uh to go over. First of all, I'm gonna have the Community Advisory Commission that you appointed um speak with you and present to you the work that they've done over the past five uh months. Um, they worked very hard uh and I really appreciate all their assistance during the process. Uh, then we're gonna go back and do some review from the workshop as far as the budget background and the goals are concerned. Um, we'll go the presentation of the budget uh in, from the bird's eye view, so to speak, um focusing only on the general fund. And then we'll be looking for direction from you as a council on where you want to go with the final draft. So we'll, we'll bring it back to you on the twenty-first for adoption. And with that, I will turn that over to the Community Advisory Commission and advise you. Agent Mary?
Mr. Bastian, you have to hold it really close to your mouth. Forgive, yes, thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members. Uh, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. First of all, I want to introduce, introduce the rest of my team members. Uh, to my left, we have this year, Mayor Pratt, um, Harold Weiss, Jessica Radyo, and just being here tonight, Julie Russo. So, um, a solid nice panel of us, but you guys, so you've got to be really good back on what we've been doing for the past month, so. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the presentation. Actually, I want to also, first of all, say thank you for all the voting signals that see up there. If anybody has not voted, the poll is voted in about eight minutes. I'm gonna hold it for the past eleven days, so please vote if you have it. Uh, our objectives for this was basically to look at what you have given us, what you've got to work with. Thank you. So we took a look at the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget process. We were gonna make some recommendations of what we think you could, you could do with our money and make recommendations to the base budget. So a little background, we spent about five months working with staff here. I want to take thanks to Mr. Romero and the recent job we've gotten and spending several evenings with us, um, going over the background of how a city budget works, types of funds, revenues, expenditures, uh, just to keep some basic, we all have different backgrounds and stories budgets, but put us all on the same page about how the city works, which was nice undertaking. Okay, discussions, capital expenditures, what it is, operating costs, projections, external forces, what a basic budget does. You know, we, we start off, we look at what you guys put together. I think most of us were at the budget workshop and goal setting, so we had some basic idea, but staff did a good job. We viewed what your party's word gave us an opportunity to further refine and make some recommendations that you listed throughout. We also reviewed the staff, of course. Uh, open discussions, five different people, five different opinions. We all were getting agree on everything. We, we professional, we kept it simple, uh, keep, keep consensus on just about everything. They gave us a process of basically a one million dollar limit. What would, what can we do with a million dollars? What a nice, what a nice gift that we had to kind of, it was fun here. So there's a priority exercise more similar to what you proposed, that either purchase or lease, motor officer, cola. I see what's going on with staff. I see his training staff and leaving, so I'm a big opponent of, you know, keep consistent staff, training to stay here. Uh, the firefighters need new scooter equipment. Video, video streaming. I thank Jessica for what she always does. I watch it at home when I have a minute to come. Uh, the streets hybrid plans. Everyone likes good streets. You know, my street was lucky enough to repave maybe four or five years ago. It'd be a big difference now. I feel it just felt in the neighborhood. And uh, so there's the dots on how we vote. You can see we didn't all come to agreement, but I think you'll see consensus in there. So as far as the recommendations, don't let our vice chief give us to you. I was named the chair. I think it's based with height.
It's a tie.
Uh, thanks, Jay, for the, for the background uh presentation on our process. Uh, so I want to thank the mayor, the council, uh, and city staff, Lydia and Gerald, who have been here to do this work. And we worked over five months, um, and provided us on the CAC, the Community Advisory Commission. And just to give you some more stats, you know, about the work uh that we did. Um, you know, over the last five months, uh, we met uh in five regular session meetings at the commission. Roughly, our meetings lasted about two hours, I would say, per meeting, uh, in our regular sessions. And we had uh two special meetings um last month in May. Yeah, in May. So in total, we had about seven regular uh and special session meetings, all lasting about two hours. So, you know, in total, um, you know, one of, you know, one of the commissioners, we worked uh about seventeen volunteer hours to go through the process and, you know, and whatnot. You know, it doesn't include, you know, any time that we took forehand, so we added an hour or so, you know, preparation for the meeting or even after the meeting. You could say, you could safely say that, you know, we spent roughly twenty, each of us spent about twenty hours or so looking at, uh, like, you know, budget and, and learning about budget, learning about city finances, uh, and things like that. So it was really interesting, uh, meeting. Uh, you know, I'm a longtime resident of the road, uh, you know, about two decades. Um, and this is, uh, you know, my first opportunity to be involved in this finance, uh, city, uh, city, probably city government and everything like that. So great learning uh opportunity. So I think all in total, with all, you know, all of the commissioners, we spent about a hundred hours, a hundred volunteer hours looking at the budget. So you know, we're speaking earlier about, you know, the, you know, some staff time, work time and all that. Um, you know, the commission worked, you know, about a hundred hours to look at the budget, look at all the different issues and items, um, you know, over the course of the past month. So just wanted to give you that context, you know, statistics, and about the work that we put in uh to, to this point. So our recommendation, um, when we looked at all of the items and all of the, uh, we had about seven different items that we were, we were taking a look at from, uh, you know, from staff, staff requests, from the community, uh, whatnot. Uh, uh, you know, all total, you know, with the ones we established as been, uh, as Jay mentioned. Um, you know, the items were, you know, uh, purchase a new fire truck, you know, purchase or lease a new fire truck, uh, to consider a new motor officer for traffic enforcement, common measures, uh, self-contained bringing apparatus for the fire department, uh, the three percent cost of living allowance for recently head staff. And it was reiterated that this does not, um, I don't think this includes buyer and doesn't include the city manager um in that three percent, so it's all other staff, you know, increase uh to the cost of living. Building upgrade for uh city council, uh, and then also the streets, uh, paving hybrid plan for those residential streets uh that are under twenty-five PCI. So, and then as well as looking at opening the recreation center on Saturday. So it's about seven different items that we looked at. And okay, we went through that priority exercise. And then here is the recommendation that the, um, as the Community Advisory Commission came up with. First, we felt that the base budget appears reasonable. So the base budget is, um, a part of the budget that we can't control and can't, uh, uh, I guess change, but we, you know, have to understand and, um, uh, take a look at that. So we, you know, found that that part of the budget is reasonable. And then uh, second part of our recommendation is for the available funds, so the one million dollars that we had to play with. Uh, you know, if those funds are available, um, um, you know, after the budget is worked out and whatnot. Um, these are our recommendations uh in this order. Uh, first, we uh recommend leasing a new fire truck, uh, which includes a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the first year and then uh one hundred thousand dollars subsequently for the next five years. And the first year is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because that includes a hundred year, a hundred thousand dollars for the lease of the fire truck, but then includes the initial twenty-five thousand dollars of outfitting, uh, the truck with proper equipment to be fully operational. We had a presentation from our fire chief, uh, Swanee, and he gave us, you know, the rundown of, you know, everything, uh, you know, needing for a new fire truck. You know, he gave us all the background of our, the current state of our fire trucks, uh, and whatnot. So I think with the, you know, additional funds that we have available, we recommend that this is our first priority is to lease a new fire truck, um, uh, with the funds. Uh, our next recommendation in order of priority is to have the city staff plan a different of streets. And I really plan for residential streets, uh, with the annual allotment of five hundred thousand dollars. And we had a presentation from our, uh, Public Works Operations Manager, Tom. And he, you know, talked more about, uh, streets and, I know there's been other presentations, uh, street workshops and whatnot, um, that, uh, you know, they shared information about that as well. Um, but I think the city could, you know, talk a little bit more, you know, if the council has more questions about that. But, um, you know, I think that five hundred thousand, you know, involved, it, uh, includes purchasing equipment so that we can do our own street, you know, in the city, uh, that, um, that, uh, that our contract will make this happen. Our next recommendation in priority is to, let's see, have the city staff, uh, review and return to the council a presentation or a plan to reopen the recreation center. Um, and it's a plan to, you know, to, to have current leases, uh, and whatnot. So, uh, you know, we, as a commission, a Community Advisory Commission, you know, recommended to allocate up to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and to direct staff, uh, to plan to provide counsel with the appropriate plan, um, to open the community, uh, uh, community recreation, uh, center. And then the next recommendation in order was to provide this lenient staff with three percent cost of living allowance for next fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is an approximate cost of twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund budget. And then our final, uh, recommendation, uh, uh, out of the five here was, is to begin the Ascoa equipment. So it's the self-contained bringing apparatus for the fire department to rotate in, um, uh, new equipment to replace old equipment. And that is to allocate up to thirty-five thousand dollars to replace that. So in total, uh, again, we had about one minute to work with, but the, our recommendation, uh, from all, you know, from all of the, you know, items that we looked at, um, so we're recommending the total cost of nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars where, um, this is an annual base budget increase of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, so year over year, this would add that much to the base budget. And then one time, it will be one-time purchase of three hundred sixty thousand dollars for, uh, the first, uh, for the first fiscal year as well. And I think that is the end of the recommendation, but we again, we want to thank, um, the council, mayor, council member, city manager, Joe, my fellow commissioners, and everybody who wants, uh, for this opportunity, but also presenting you our recommendations as a Community Advisory Commission. And now, if there's any questions?
Uh, if, um, you could just stand there for one moment before, um, we take questions, I, I wanted to try to see if we have any secrets to writing this particular item.
Please no.
Uh, thank you so very much. And, um, so I will, I'll start with our, our council members here. Um, two questions, and I'll start with Councilmember Ecton.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand the part where you're recommending that we look into reopening the recreation center. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that, did I see that correctly, remember correctly? Three hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, I added an L to exit. Um, is, and that three hundred, that three hundred thousand, is that intended to be a one-time expense? Or is that, is that something you intend to, uh, that would go for the base budget for ongoing expenses?
If, if, if the commission will allow, um, I knew when we were talking about it, it would probably be built into the base um for the full opening of the rec center. It's a little different than what the council, um, just did at your, um, uh, your strategic focus. This is about opening the rec center, um, soup to nuts. So having it operational, not just on a Saturday, but every day of the week and staffed. So it's a little bit of a different animal here.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Coming back with a report to council that, that susses out all of that stuff, what really would be the net revenue of, um, what revenue would be coming in and what would be, um, the subsidy from the general fund?
Combination one-time fee, five, a one-year, well.
Okay.
Obviously, the past eleven days, the rec center, the voting centers, it's been great for you to see what it's like by the active rec center, so.
Okay, okay. So the one-time expense would be like feasibility study, I think, I think to that nature, okay, okay.
Realizing there's gonna be some onward expenses if they don't help the energy staff.
Um, yeah, I think that was my only question for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Um, I, I don't really have any questions. I think this is very clear, but I, I do want to thank you for all your time of doing this. And, um, you know, we have to give a little credit to Mr. Gastel because this was kind of his idea. Oh, okay, I guess it was his idea too.
It's been around for a while.
But, um, and it was quite some time ago, I think, like when George was on the council before. And, um, it's, it's really turned out to be, um, a beautiful exercise because, um, it, it just gives us, uh, more of an idea of what the community wants. Um, we are, we're the community too, because we're only a microcosm of the community, so we appreciate getting our input. And as you're gonna see, our thinking is very, we're thinking along, pretty much thinking along the same lines. So it's kind of, it's reinforced, um, a lot of our, um, ideas. So thank you very much for all, all of you for all the time that you've been doing this.
You're welcome. I think you did a good job of picking, representing, good representative community. You've got folks that did it a couple of years, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, fifteen. So, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, we're, we're lucky we're your neighbors, so you live here, you're from up here.
I think you, um, Mayor Potem Jones?
Uh, I might kind of tack on to George's question about the rec center, but, but expand that a little bit into, to kind of the overall thing here. Um, and this kind of goes back to my comment, earlier comments about ongoing expenses and one-time monies. The, the three hundred thousand, that was not intended to be just for the study. Was that intended to be some operational costs as well?
Yeah, it's a combination.
Combination. So in terms of, of the overall work you, you guys did, which this was a part of it, you, were you considering, you considered one-time and ongoing money? Is that, it was just kind of an, it was kind of an exercises work? Okay, all right. So my second question, I, I'll make, I'll make a comment as is number one. You guys figured out it's out it's, it's a lot more time than just the two-hour meetings, right?
Yeah, you know that first.
You did, because you were on the school board, so you've already been through this, but I think the rest of you realize that the time we spend up here is, is, is like the tip of the iceberg compared to all the rest of the time we spend doing all the research and stuff. And, and I just want to say that I appreciate all of you that spent the time doing this. You know, when we, when we came up with the idea for, for the CAC, the idea was to kind of expand something that we'd done before, which was to do the, to do focus groups. And, and I think George and I both felt that focus groups had more value than like a town hall meeting, because, you know, you bring in members of the community and they have full access to the city staff, basically the same as a council does. So the work that you do is informed and, and, of course, it's more time than you probably thought you were going to. And again, we, you know, we really appreciate the time you spend and the value we get from hearing from you is, is tremendous and I just want to say thank you to all of you.
You're welcome. A little big thanks to you for letting us use your staff. They spent way more time than we did. They got us prepared, gave us some homework, but nothing to drink to eat.
Next time.
We'll put that, hey, we'll put that in the budget.
And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank each and every person who was involved with the CAC for your time, your talent, and your dedication to bringing back what we see here today. We appreciate each and every one of you for being part of the discussion to provide us with these recommendations. So I'm taking a look at the recommendations and, I mean, I just want a little bit of clarity here. Number one, and it's under number two, it says have, have city staff plan and implement a free hybrid plan for resident streets with PCI 25 or less with an annual allotment of 500K. So I just wanted a little bit of clarification regarding the question today.
Madam Mayor, the commission will allow, I can, I can try to give you the background and where that came from and how that worked in the commission itself. In, during the streets workshop, the operations manager, Mr. Bell, had discussed the options of those types of situations, which would be hiring staff into the city that would be full-time, that would spend the majority of their time doing these types of street repairs. And when they're not actively doing street repairs, then they would be working on the public works functions. The $500,000 itself basically covers getting the equipment that we would need, primarily the asphalt strike. We don't have one capable of actually maintaining and creating that. We have some equipment that is okay for parking lots, but in order to do a street property where you don't have the, the lines and the divots that collect the water and great stuff, we need the proper equipment to actually lay the asphalt. Then followed up with, of course, the maintenance and machinery and stuff like that, salaries, the benefits, the forever and it goes on. So the first year basically was, was sent by the public works department as getting the equipment and the people on board, getting the list of the streets prioritized, working through that process, and starting the initial smaller streets to determine what needs to be taken down on the ground, what needs to be layered, so on and so forth. And then each subsequent year, the $500,000 would be going for salaries as well as all the materials needed and the equipment needed, whether we may have to rent some that we don't currently have, so on and so forth. So the $500,000 is a, kind of like a base line to budget with, and it could go up or down depending on where they are in that process. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and so this would be an ongoing expense. Okay.
We just had one last thing on the second place, we didn't mention about the fire truck. We mentioned the price of the new truck, it was going up to about, you know, five to seven percent. So if you want to consider that, the fire guys are buying one, you can just take this as an example.
And for clarification here, are you, when you say buying one, are you speaking in terms of the lease option or buying the truck outright?
Our recommendation was to lease it. I'm not sure if the lease fees will go up. If we do choose a different recommendation to buy one, our recommendation is to act
And so I would say that my interpretation is get it now. Just, just get it now. The best way possible, where it is truly feasible for our city. Thank you so very much.
Madam Mayor, if I may object, from the fire chief, the, the information provided us was that, yes, the costs are going up about five to seven percent per month. The places that they utilize are just curious, I believe. They have an in-house leasing program, so it's decent forward immediately once the approval is there. So the leasing program would continue forward, so we would still lock in the price. The only fluctuation would be that of any interest or rates or anything that we do moving forward as far as those are concerned. And of course, if the rates going up, the quicker we lock that in, the lesser the rate would be.
Well, I believe that we would, as a city, want to take action as soon as possible, knowing that there is a need and we are living in a day, in an age where the economy is so unpredictable. So...
Give me the motion for that.
We'll get there. But before we get to that motion, I just wanted to check in to see if there are any additional questions or comments before we continue on with the presentation.
Well, I had a, I guess it's a comment related to the $500,000 per, per paving. If, if, if we say we're committing $500,000 for, for this paving every year, then we're saying it's a, it's a base budget ongoing expense. But if we say we're going to pave X, Y, and Z streets, they get paved and it's done. So if, so, so, so street paving is something that can be phrased as one-time expenses or it can be phrased as ongoing, and that depends partly on your ability to identify the streets, partly on what kind of work you're doing, whether it's maintenance or, or completely redoing a street. But I, I just thought I'd put that out there, that, that we could say $500,000 is actually a one-time, and, 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 you know, because it's going to do the streets and they'll be paid, and it's, and it's not like you have to come back and pay them again the next year. So there's more than we'll get, yeah.
I'm just also reinforce those jokes that that includes adding some staff, so we're not paving, misses the equipment.
Oh, I see.
If you're adding staffs who are not worker of paving, you've got them to do other things besides.
It, oh, that's such a, that's such a good point. Yes, the staff are an ongoing expense. Yes, thank you so much for that.
And I'll check in to see if we have any more questions for the CAC to forward. I'll turn this over to Mayor Hutton Jones.
Actually, just a comment, I just want to point out to Madam Mayor that they only have a million to spend and we have 1.5 to 2, $2 million, and that's why I asked the question earlier. So we have the money to buy the truck that they didn't have, so I just want, I just want to point that out.
Oh, they'll come back.
It's, it's okay, it's okay. I can make the motion.
No excuses on the rec then.
And my second point is on the paving. I, there's going to be some one-time expenditures on the paving in terms of equipment. However, I'm not sure that you can consider the personnel a, an ongoing expense, because, because in all reality, we're using, we're using our own labor as opposed to an out, and paying an outside company. So basically, it's what, what we're doing is, is that our employer competing with a private company. And, and if you remember, San Diego used to have a process, I don't know if they still do, somebody may be able to correct me, they used to have a process where their own, their own departments, the public utilities departments would, would actually compete with, with contractors. So in all reality, I'm not sure you could consider those employees as ongoing expenses, because you, you, you're, whatever money you would spend having a contractor doing, do this work, you're, you're actually spending on employees for the same amount of money.
Correct. And with a contractor, they do one job and then they leave. With ongoing employees, I can then redeploy them in, in between doing a rebuild of a 25 PCI street to say, take care of a homeless encampment, or take care of the graffiti and fill more potholes with the street that we can't get to that's on the list. So we have the ability to deploy them in other forms and fashion if we do that hybrid option. And that's what we're looking at, is that, that was the recommendation of hybrid, to increase our force of public works so we can bring it in-house and have the expertise in-house to pave the streets in-house. That managed competition actually lost its cachet when the state legislature said that all general fund cities, which we are one, has to pay their minimum wage.
If I may, and on that, Mayor Hutton Jones, you are correct in the aspect that part of it will be one-time and by the equipment. However, we will continue to have ongoing costs as far as maintenance is concerned, supplies to, that we utilize to do the streets, again, with staffing, down to staff allocation, which council passed in 2019, some of those wages would be diverted from the general fund based on what they're doing, however, they will be continuing ongoing costs.
But, but my point here is, is that, that when you bring those things in-house, basically you're bringing in a business into the city. And, and in the feasibility study, you, you want to analyze the savings that you make by having it in-house as opposed to contracting it out. And, and you may, you may have savings or you may break even, and then you may break even, and then you have extra staff to do other things. So there's, you know, there's, there's pretty far questions within that feasibility study that need to be, need to be answered when we bring that back to council, if that makes sense. So I just want to make sure that this whole concept isn't, doesn't necessarily add to the ongoing costs of the budget, because those salaries for, for paving the streets then come out of the restricted fund, the gasoline restricted fund, right, to pave the streets, or am I not correct?
You are absolutely correct. You had my little secret weapon I was going to show. Not 100% of this is for a budget general fund.
That, okay, so, so there's my point, so, sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead here. Well, yes, I did.
Thank you. And so there are no further questions of the CAC. I will turn this, I will turn this over to Lydia Lanero to make a comment.
Yeah, I just want to share with the council, I, I need the appreciation of what the CAC did. They really came willing to work, and I know the first meeting was with this Mr. Greve, who was our interim finance manager, our administrative service director. And literally the first meeting, I came to the CAC with a stack of reading homework that was probably about five hours of reading homework that they had to do. And so they, they did it willingly, they didn't complain, they all came with well-researched questions, they challenged staff's assumptions, and just, as the memo said, we just focused on the general fund. We did not go into the other funds, because we did start this committee late, and we really had to jam a lot of information down their throats very, very quickly about revenues, how they're bore, expenses that city has done, what we can and cannot do, what can and cannot be touched. And they all just rose to the occasion, and it was a pleasure to work so hard.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. And again, thank you for serving on the CAC and bringing the recommendations forward. And so now, I will turn this over to Joe to finish the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed, we're going to go ahead and do the general fund overview. And really, this is going to be a repeat of the workshop we had on the 25th, just kind of a reminder, to the background, we are talking about the general fund. These are cities' day-to-day operating funds, unrestricted funding. It's monies that we can use on anything that the city needs. We basically started this process back in January, working with the city council to get it off, city staff, community advisory council working together to get where we So today is the general fund draft budget. And this draft budget, in the form of the city staff report, is considered the base budget, meaning that this is the monies that we need to operate the city for the fiscal year. It's just a basic operation lease, it does not include any of the items or staff requests that we were talking about in the past two generations. What is our budget goals? Basically, at this point, the budget goal is to create a financial guide for the city that takes us through the fiscal year 22, '23, which basically starts July 1 and goes through June 30th of next year. This document is going to provide your council authority to the city staff and the direction on the expenditure of funds. The budget document itself produces a greater transparency, not only for the council but for the constituents, on where their tax dollars and their monies are being spent. It incorporates the council as well as the citizen priorities into the city's financial plan and quantifies those within the spending function. One of our ultimate goals is to create a structural balanced budget, which by definition is that this year's income is equal to or greater than this year's expenses. And then we also need to make sure that we maintain our structured reserve funding, which currently is right around $5 million. This slide, I know it's hard to see, this is the slide yourself, the meaning basically where is our tax revenue coming from? Primarily, we have the sales tax, property taxes, property taxes. Let me see it this way here. So all the taxes, the revenue that we are, we did not make any adjustments to revenue at this point from the workshop, so we're looking at $17,541,903, this estimated revenue. As you can see, the top three, sales tax, property tax, and we will be LF and property tax themselves, those are your three major generators, which, sales tax itself, we discussed, we're wanting to start looking at other options and help diversify where this funding comes from, so that we're not so dependent on sales tax itself because the back is only the level. Again, the projection showing where the expenditures are going from through the administration. Again, that's just a visual, it'll show you the, easier to read here, where everything is going. Administration incorporates all other areas of city functions that are not listed separately. So public safety and fire, community development, public works, outside of that, everything else goes into their city councils, city managers, city clerk, finance, all those departments are part of the administration section. And as it stands out, we come up with $17,436,000, which basically is going to leave you a little over $105,000 for this fiscal year, added to the fund balance at the end of the Some other areas that we, you wanted us to come back with on our personal update, salaries and benefits are budgeted in the primary fund, and based on the 2019 cost allocations survey, they are split and allocated to the departments in which they are, or the funds that they are working through, based on the formula calculated by our, our vendor. We do have one position that is split 50/50, and so that person is actually different than this rule, that's why that it's up there, because 50% goes to the home department, the other 50% goes to sanitation. Salaries and benefits, as you, as we discussed, look a little bit higher this year in the budget book than they did in the past, and that's because we've moved from a fund-based budget to a cost-based budget, meaning that we're showing the full cost that it takes to run a department, and then at the end, we are showing what those revenue sources are. So when you look at the revenue source, you can compare what previous general fund costs So when you look at the revenue source, you can compare what previous general fund costs were, a little bit easier. As far as fire personnel salaries and benefits are concerned, it reflects the 3% raise in the negotiated MOU for fiscal year 23. Miscellaneous staff and salary benefits, at this point, all remain at the current FY22 As far as insurance is concerned, our property coverage premiums do not update until March, so we'll have to bring those figures back to mid-year or later. SDG and E, as far as utilities are concerned, they are requesting a rate increase, however, that won't take effect until sometime next year, so we're, we're not expecting an impact on those until the fourth quarter of this year or the first quarter of next year. So insurance rates for generalized union workers compensation, they've gone up 4%, which is basically about $12,000, primarily because of claims that we've had in the public Calpers was kind of a bit of a good news. Our unapproved liabilities only increased $100,000 this year, which is, which is nice. And the good thing is, is we've already calculated that in to the salaries, so that was, that was exciting for us. And if you look at the FY22-23 rates for active employees throughout, for the most part, they've stayed the same, or like miscellaneous classic, 0.01. Miscellaneous second tier, they actually went down 0.02. So the rates are pretty much stable. The biggest climb itself was the safety classic, which was what, 0.05, it went up a little bit. So that was some very good news that we got from Calpers this year. So some significant expenditure changes. Basically, our, our public service contract did go one, up 1% this year for $100,000. The fire wages with the 3% increase with MOU is $281,000. Non-departmental increase, 35,000 due to the upcoming election. There was a $610,000 capital carryover from FY21. I mean, we get over to the next slide, that's gonna be important to understand where we're going from. The one thing that's not on here that is significant, that I failed to put on there, I apologize, is we did increase the, the amount of contract monies to the city attorney by $125,000 due to ongoing and increased litigation. So what does all this that I've been talking about mean? Here's our new bottom line. We are projected for FY22-23 to have $105,887 surplus in our FY23 budget, which is a little bit different than the 1.5 million that you heard earlier, or that earlier. This is where some of that $610,000 comes into play. Government accounting rules are a little bit different, so you have to recognize the revenues in the year they're obtained, and you have to recognize the expenditures in the year that it's spent. So therefore, the $610,000 of CIP projects that have carried over into this next fiscal year, those revenues were allocated last year. So your fund balance last year shows you having a surplus of 1.17 million dollars, when in reality, had those projects been completed, you'd have only had a $500,000 surplus.
So there's still many times.
Okay? So this year, basically what that means for you is anything really, $715,000 added to this budget would in reality keep you within what the FY23 surplus would have been without that carryover. But unfortunately, we have to count it in that way. So you won't touch any of the fund, the existing fund balance until you go over $715,000. So here comes the, the aspect that we were talking about, the unfunded requests, kind of repeating everything else that's been going on with the fire truck purchasing at six, approximately $650,000 is a one-time purchase. That number depends again on when we actually cut the PO and, and order it. For leases, which is estimated $125,000 for the first year, $100,000 for the sets for five years. The first year includes outfitting with all of the videos, headsets, and those items that cannot be removed from the, the other trucks, the one that's going out of commission. Secondly, the motor officer, adding a dedicated motor officer in the motorcycle traffic control, so that this individual is dedicated solely to traffic commerce and traffic enforcement. It cannot be rerouted to other law enforcement calls, it's solely traffic. There are exclusions in that when it comes to officer safety, officer shootings, those types of things, that could be one-time exemptions. That's $233,000, that is an increase to the base budget, as is the, the lease of the fire truck, which is the base budget for five years. The SCBA replacements, $35,000 of one-time purchase this fiscal year, primarily what that does is it allows the fire department to put in new equipment frontline for their breathing apparatuses, and take the equipment that is at or near their end-of-life cycle and remove it from the rotation. Next is the possible living allowance for miscellaneous staff. This goes to all staff except for contract staff, which includes, which is, includes the city manager, the city attorney, those types of people, because they are in contract and not considered civil servants and miscellaneous staff. So it would just be, basically, it would be all other city employees that are not fire related, except the city manager. The next one is the benefits increase for miscellaneous staff. As we discussed at the workshop, this basically would allocate up to an additional $600 per employee, matching the fire labor agreement, which would be up to $274,000 increase to the base budget. And we say "up to" because council doesn't have to do 600, they could do 200, they could say 300, 100, they could say nothing, it just depends on what it was, and that's, that's your worst-case scenario, adding, should you increase their benefits. And then the final aspect is communications officer, moving the authorization from 0.5 to 1.0 FTE, making the individual full-time. That position cost increase would be $51,000, approximately $51,000 for the benefits increase to the base budget. So where do we go from here? At this point in time, we are requesting that the city council have a discussion by staff direction on where you would like to go, either sticking with the base budget, adding certain items, whichever, whatever you would like to do at this point in time. Anything that comes back with the council, which is majority concurrent, we will go ahead and add into the base budget, so that we will have the draft final budget back on June 21 for final adoption. And with that, it concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so very much. And so I will do two rounds of questioning. Just note that this is just the second item, and that staff will be taking notes and incorporating our comments into the final draft budget, which will be presented at our next city council meeting. And so I will start with Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you. I, I'm really glad to see such a solid budget, such a realistic budget, and, you know, it's a time to remind people that the function of the city isn't the balanced budget, the function of the city is to protect the people and, and serve the functions of the city, and balancing the budget is, is part of that, but, but, but it, but it's, it's something that goes along with that. The main objective is to protect the people in the city and promote the, the community benefits that, that people, that people most highly value. I think this, I think this budget reflects our priorities and, and, and our aspirations, and while also being, being moderately conservative, not, not expecting any miracles, but at the same time, try and step up and make the most of what we, of what we see as opportunities that we have in front of us. I, I, I've got a couple things I think I'm gonna turn into questions. I want to make sure that all the priorities that we've talked about, that were solid about, are reflected in this budget. I believe it includes the, it includes making the safety officer full-time, it includes making the communication specialist full-time, it, it includes the fire engine, though I don't think it specifies whether the fire engine is a lease or a purchase. It, it, does it assume lease? Okay, okay, good clarification.
No, this, this is just the base budget, Councilmember, it does not include anything of the, of all the unfunded requests, it does not include any of those items.
And, and if I can chime in here, what I'd like to do is bring up the slide that says general fund FY22-23 unfunded request. So if you go back maybe like two...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so, 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 so that's a good clarification, and I, I can't remember why I didn't already know it.
I will make a correction to that, I'm looking in the, in the man budget portion that you received, and once I, I already took the privilege of adding the communication specialist full-time, so that salary is included.
Okay.
If you choose not to move forward of that, then that salary would reduce factor to 45. My apologies for that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I, I strongly support it, whether it's in this budget or added later, I strongly support it. But it's good to know that it's already in here, because then it doesn't, it means that we don't, it, it means that these numbers look good even with that already in there, if that makes any sense. Yeah, I, I, I want to say that in regards to, I think we're all solid about the 3%, and I hope we're all understanding that that 3% is just a good faith effort to update salaries, it's not, i- 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 it's not capturing the need to actually do a salary survey and evaluate salaries that, that are low compared to other jurisdictions. And, and I want to make sure people are conscious of the fact that the need to update salaries to be more competitive in other jurisdictions is an ongoing need. The 3% obviously is going to help in some way, but it's really just a good faith effort to update salaries for, for normal, you know, normal economic changes, whereas, whereas what, what we proved in our budget, in our, in our goals, in our goals is to actually take a look at the salary structure and see where jobs are in fact underpaid in relation to, to, to the, the job market out there. And, and I want to say that in regard to benefits, I, I definitely think we need to increase the, the employee benefits, ideally make them on, on par with, with what our public safety personnel get for benefits. Though I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that any specific discussion of staff benefits is really a closed session item, because it's, because it's, it's staff, I mean, just the nature of the, the items, and anything that's actually specific would be closed session.
And, and we are having some of that discussion at the end of your year.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was my, but in general, big picture budget discussion, and where the distinction is, I'm not sure, but I, I hope I don't step over any lines. I, I definitely want to increase the benefits, I think it's okay to say that in a big picture sense, and I want to make our staff, staff salaries not only updated for inflation, but also, I'm looking forward to making them more aligned with what other communities are offering for essentially saying, or doing similar work. I think that's probably all I needed to say, I think I remembered to say thank you and great work. Okay, I thought I always say that too. All right, that'll be for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, I, I wanted to make sure that on the unfunded request, that that is more reflective of what we just previously voted on, which was our, our priorities and goals. And so these, this unfunded request doesn't include the street, street repairs or the recreation center, and, and I think we should also, as George mentioned, include a salary survey and, and maybe in, not just, you know, for all our employees, including fire. Is that okay for me to mention that outside of the closed session? But I think we, we need to look, look at all our, all of our employees, and a salary survey would be a good, I don't know what a salary survey would cost, but I think it would be a good place to start. As far as specific questions, on the public safety overview, I'm gonna harp on this again, and that's the animal control. We're projecting $300,000 salary of our animal control officer. It includes a salary, overtime, equipment, shelter services, soup to nuts for all of our animal controls. That's not just for the, that $300,000 is not just for the officer to be in the street, but it's all the animals that are attributed to Lemon Grove, is all of the veterinary services, shelter services, the care and feeding of all the animals that have to stay at the shelter. We're responsible for that, that being until they're picked up or re-adopted or purposed out, or, or taken by a care group to be then adopted out. But that's, that, in my opinion, that is a lot of money, $25,000 a month, because I know, you know, the, we're not, I mean, what's the animal control officer making? He's not making $25,000 a month. I hope not, or I will take his job.
And Councilmember, may I add, is if you recall from the goal session, that we are embarking, and it'll be, it'll be bled over into next year, but you'll get the report in the summer, looking at the comparative services.
I'm just complaining about it again.
Looking at the comparative services.
They do every year.
It's similar, Councilmember, it's similar to the, the other contract, the public safety in itself, it, it includes everything, maintenance, the maintenance, the liability, all the requirements. The person that is the animal control officer has to be a certified post-employee, so it's a different, it's not just someone like me getting in and trying to pick up dogs, it's an actual certified lawn work officer that has to do that.
And, and I'll, I'll remind everybody again, how, how, how much revenue do we get per year for dog licensing? $10,000, you know? And I, my neighbor right now has 11 dogs, okay? And she's getting rid, I talked to her yesterday, she's getting rid of them. I mean, I don't want to turn my neighbor in, but like, seriously, and I know that, I, I don't think any of them are off, any of them. You don't know which neighbor it is.
Sniffing out doors.
But, you know, I don't think any of them are licensed, and so, you know, we're not, I feel like we're not doing enough to, to recover some, we could be recovering, we should be recovering a lot of the costs for, for animal control. So I'm, I'm sorry, I just get all upset about that. Okay, and then under community services expenditures, this just seemed odd to me. There was, and I, I don't have page numbers, so it's under significant changes, under community services expenditures, significant changes. If you look down at funding source, it has $11,000, $1,739 is a funding source from the sanitation district. And I'm, I'm just wondering what connection there is between community services and the sanitation district?
In community services, part of the administrative staff or public works is located in that, and so some of the... And so some of the salaries that are utilized in public works, administration aspect that this individual also does, is covered in that portion.
So their work, also doing work specifically for the sanitation district?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And then just a, well, I can save this for comments, but I just want to say I really like the new way you laid everything out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Portman, Phil.
Is it my turn to complain about hot water heater permits that I used to complain about then? I haven't done that in a while. I think, just to answer, tack on to some of your comments, I think some of the things you're looking for money in is really what would be allocated in the staff plan. Is that a correct assessment?
Absolutely.
It's not that it's not there, it's just a staff time allocation rather than money allocation. I want to go back and talk about the CIP monies, just so that I understand how that works. When we carry over the, when we have this CIP budget that doesn't get spent in particular year, we carry the money over, do we carry the projects over to the next budget?
That is correct, Mayor Portman, yes.
So even though that money's carried over, it's still?
It's still allocated for what you allocated for this past fiscal year.
Right.
That money is still dedicated and allocated for what you have already passed and required to.
So it comes in and goes out in the same thing. So it doesn't really show up as an ending balance per se? Well, it does, but it comes back out, so thus me asking, what's the real number for the unallocated amount, because these things get complicated sometimes.
Correct, that's why we have such a high addition to the fund balance of 1.17 million this year, because $610,000 of the projects did not get completed.
Right.
So that money did not get expended, and thus your fund balance is revenues, resources, minus expenditures. So now that goes back into the fund balance, and it'll be used this year on those same projects, which then reduces our current fiscal year fund balance for, because that's how it kind of works.
It counts, you guys made me agree something. For what it's worth, I sit on San Diego's independent rate oversight committee for Metro, and I sit on operations and maintenance, and I also sit on finance committee there. And San Diego does a similar thing, and their finance people make their committee people equally crazy over there, so, you know, it's not just here, so I won't hold over here. So just as long, so I just want to be clear on that, and I think that, I think I know where it's going, I just think it's good for the public to understand the nuances and some of the challenges in looking at budgets and stuff like that. So I guess my final question is, I mean, here's our list of unallocated recommendations, and it kind of adds up to like 1.2 million to me. Some of that is going to be, well, some of that is going to be ongoing and some of it is one-time, right? So when I'm looking at this list, like COLA benefits, are those in this budget? Did I miss that? Those are not in this budget?
They are not in this budget. The base budget, which I have in front of you, with the exception of the communication officer, which I took the liberty of adding, everything else is not in this current fiscal year budget. This is the base budget that takes operate the city in the same manner that we are right now.
So the 3% COLA for fire, that's a contractional amount to the current base budget.
Right, right.
But the miscellaneous employees are not.
So we're going, will this put us in a deficit? Can we add those things?
We're carrying.
Oh, I'm sorry, we carried over the money from the, I just asked that question and I totally missed it.
As a reminder, the, anything that you spend in our projections, anything over $715,000 included, added to this current budget, would then technically put us in a deficit.
In a deficit, okay. And that's what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to understand, or trying to at least make clear, kind of what the deficit is, because we're talking about doing some one-time expenditures here, like we want to buy the fire truck, the chief wants to buy the fire truck. And we've got the school gear on the fire truck, which we have the money to do. So that's going to, it's going to make it look like a pretty big deficit spend this year, when it really isn't, because we're spending on, you know, money out of reserves.
And technically, again, you won't be spending money out of reserves until you go over the $715,000.
We're spending money out of, well, we're spending money out of previous reserves, right? We're not spending money out of carryover reserves, okay? So we're spending money out of unallocated reserves.
And Mayor Portman, may I make the suggestion about the fire truck, is if we have the authority to purchase it, we could move forward and initiate a PO now and lock in the rates before it turns over the new fiscal year. We can do that, which is a PO, but we could also go down the lease, the lease path, and if we get some one-time funds, we can always pay that lease up early. We don't have to stay locked in to that lease rate.
But what I'm saying is that we have the money, right? We have the money. And to be honest with you, we could bring a resolution back to the next city council meeting, even before we move past the budget, and we could spend that money right now out of the reserves that we have. We could order that, we could order it at our next council meeting.
You technically can do that. You can put the expenditure with the staff report and a resolution in, and we accredit it to the FY 21, 22 plan, budget plan, and pulling from those reserves. Yes, we definitely can make that reserve allocation like we've done on several CIP projects where it's a one-time allocation. It may have a bearing on your fund balance at the end unless you pull it directly from reserves.
And the pulling from reserves at this point, based on the economic practice we talked about previously, I have a caution in that until we know what those indicators are and where they're going, we have to be very careful about pulling from that reserve balance because of cash flow issues, understanding that our revenues, the taxes only come in twice a year. So we could end up in a cash flow issue at that point if we're spending too much cash upfront and not having that cash flow come through. So it's, even though we technically have the money, because we're on a modified accrual counting system, meaning we recognize the revenues when they're measurable.
Right.
We don't necessarily have them in our account. So we have to be careful with those cash flow issues. So that's why we try to keep a larger fund balance in itself above and beyond the reserves so that we don't have those cash flow issues.
You know what I've got on my mind, is I just, you know, as inflation is going up, and as, you know, as interest rates are going up, you know, I'm just looking at ways to save money on this thing. I mean, you know, if you, you always weigh that paying the interest versus having the cash, you know, we do that in our own lives, right? But I suppose if a lease is the way that we're going to go, I would suggest that, you know, based on what I've said here in terms of how much money we have, and, you know, the one-time monies we have, we could make the decision on a lease again before we pass the budget, am I correct?
Absolutely. And I want to, Mayor Portman, if you will allow, ask, turn it over to the chief, because I think we're talking about, say, a lease payment of $100,000 with an increase factor like the normal auto loan. And if I remember correctly, we lock in the payment plan, and it doesn't increase. We don't pay taxes on a fire truck because we're a governmental entity, and then we lock in the plan. So it's not going to, we're not going to pay $100,000 this year and $101,000 the next fiscal year. It'll be $100,000 all the way through. And there's no increase or escalation in interest rate.
But that 5% per month is in my mind, and I'm thinking, you know, when, how long's it going to take us to pass the budget? And, you know, if this is to save us some money, and we have the ability to do it, let's pull the trigger.
If we, if you guys are on board on the 20th, and you pass the budget, the next day I can issue a PO.
Okay, all right.
And once I issue that PO, it locks in that rate.
So we're talking two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
That's correct.
Chief, I tried to get your truck free tomorrow, okay? You know, like.
I'm still going to order tomorrow, I'll just wait until you're ready.
Tell him the check's in the mail.
The only clarifying question that I have about the fire truck is if we do move forward with the lease option, are there any penalties for prepayment or like paying it off earlier? And would we save regarding the interest?
In my understanding, Mayor, is the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Piers has an in-house leasing program. So we lock in with Piers directly, we're not necessarily going through a funding agency. We're locking in with Piers, is that correct? So therefore, our payments are going directly to Piers, and therefore our interest rate stays, whatever our payment is, once we lock in that rate, it's going to be basically six payments equal plus the initial $25,000 to outfit the truck, if they require it.
Thank you so very much. And I'm on board with the unfunded requests that are outlined on the slide. Minus the communications officer that's already in the budget. And so I'll just check to see if there are any more comments or questions before we move on from this particular agenda item. We do not need a motion or a second.
No. Can I just make a comment? I understand cash flow, and it took me 10 years to pay off my snap on bill after I closed my shop.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, so I just wanted to be clear, are we in agreement to add some of the items that were on our goal, goals?
Okay, yes. And Councilmember, as we understood it, once you were okay with the goal statement, how we said it, we're going to come back and show you in the next budget what that means to the bottom line and how we can manage all of those issues.
Thank you so very much. And still, again, there's no act needed for agenda item number five, and we are moving on to agenda item number six.
And Mayor Vasquez, I just want to say in consideration of our protocols, at 8:00 we're supposed to do a check-in with the city council to see if they want to continue with the meeting or move on and do a check-in. I can pretty much do the next two items fairly quickly and get through both items in a half hour. And then I think closed session will be about another half hour, but it's up to the council as how you want to direct the agenda.
Thank you so very much. So item number six is homeless services memorandum of understanding, and item number seven is the extended service charges for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And so I'll check to see if everyone is on board with moving forward with those two particular agenda items.
Yeah, I think, I think we can, as long as we think that there's, as easy as they look, if we end up, if we end up taking more time on either of the items, then we should rethink it. Because I, I think, you know, we've been here three hours, and we've seen a little bit of wear and tear on us, but I think, these items don't look that hard, frankly, and I think, I think we're good for it. But I sure appreciate the check-in. It might be worth asking if anybody needs a bathroom or anybody doing like that. Would that help?
Do we need to take a break perhaps before we proceed?
All right.
Okay, well, it looks like we are good to go.
All right, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, if you can assist, please, next item. I'm bringing to you the, an agenda item for homeless services memorandum of understanding with the cities of Loma del Rey, Santa Fe, and the county of San Diego. Next slide. By way of background, East County cities have begun this discussion for a regional approach to homelessness for several years now. And we wanted to have a regional approach, knowing that not one city can take care of installing the homeless problem by itself. It really is a collective. For those of you that went to the homeless workshop that was held several months ago, when one community does a community cleanup or cleans up campments, it flows over to another community, and we wanted to avoid that at each point. We started to engage the county of San Diego first at the supervisory level and then at the human services level to come up and create this MOU. The cities actually presented the MOU to the county staff for their reflection. And this was actually part of the council's priorities and discussions for this current fiscal year is to look at a regional approach. Next item. By way of background, next slide please.
By way of background, I want to have the council understand why this is such an important MOU for the city of Loma del Rey. You've heard me say many times that we are constrained because of Boise, and this is the case, Martin versus Boise. What happened was is the city of Boise was challenged on their anti-enforcement disorderly ordinance. The court ruled in 2009 that what Boise was doing was illegal. The decision was an interpretation of the Eighth Amendment, which is, for those of you that remember super high school, that's cruelly unusual punishment, that you can't cite a homeless individual that did not have the ability to go to the shelter. The, this ruling was appealed to the court, the district court, and the Ninth District upheld it, which means it covers the state of California. They petitioned, they, meaning Boise, petitioned the U.S. Supreme Court to review the ruling, and they denied the appeal, which means the Ninth Circuit, the Ninth Circuit decision stands. So again, enforcement of anti-camping laws is restricted by court order, which means we cannot do it. And this case made the nexus between enforcement of anti-camping ordinances and housing. This is the first time that nexus was made. And again, it did restate that homelessness is not a crime. Other criminal activities remain enforceable, but in California, Proposition 47 reclassified these certain offenses to misdemeanors, which does not have the effect that they did previously. Next slide.
So can I add something to that? I just want to clarify one thing, which is you cannot cite that, you cannot cite homeless people to camping unless you have somewhere for them to go.
Yes.
That's the point, that's the point of the case, is if you have somewhere for them to go, and you offer them a shelter to go to, and there's a bed for them, then you can cite them if they refuse, but you have to have somewhere for them to go. So this, and the MOU provisions. So again, the MOU addresses homelessness as a regional issue that no single jurisdiction can address, the cities alone. The cities really want a regional approach to leverage their resources. Being the smallest of the complement of the four cities in East County, we will definitely benefit with the strength of El Cajon and Loma del Rey as we pull forces together. This MOU does not require any of the parties that sign on to establish any facilities without particular city council approval. So anything that we consider about a shelter or permanent housing, all has to come before this body for approval. There's some cost sharing to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and this is a five-year term MOU. If this doesn't work, this MOU can expire on its own at any time if it's not working for a certain jurisdiction. A certain jurisdiction can then move out of that MOU. We're not contained or restricted by staying within the MOU for that five-year period. But this does commit the county to work with us as a region opposed to individual cities. The counties have the largest role and the largest share of work in this regional MOU, and I'm not going to go through all of the responsibilities, but you can see that they are responsible for helping identify little area housing or shelter locations. They have to be the one to help seek supportive housing to help cover the number of people in the region. They will coordinate all of the parties, determine the equitable financial share of joint costs, so they will work with us as to what that equitable share of cost will be amongst the four regions, or if we enter into an agreement to open a shelter with the county, what those cost sharing would be, again, coming back to the city council. This will allow all of
council. This will allow all of our outreach programs and outreach services to then work as a region collaboratively together opposed to on an individual basis. Some of our outreach service workers do work collaboratively, but this will allow them to work cross-jurisdictional to do that. Again, this gives us bigger strength to get grants and awards, and it forces the county to look at their surplus property as well as within the incorporated cities for shelter or permanent supportive housing. The city's responsibilities is, next, is again, supporting the county in some of their activities, again, helping to cite some of the low-barrier housing, shelter services, and helping participate in a request for proposal if that is in the jurisdiction that they're looking at. Ongoing data collection efforts, and we'll be working with the county to do ongoing data collection. We will be working with the county to identify any potential sites that may be viable for either shelter or permanent supportive housing. But again, that has, the final say comes to the city council for concurrent and approval. It is not a case where the county is making it happen without your tax of improvement. And that was really important for us when we did this MOU. We need to keep the jurisdictions involved. And then it allows us to utilize the permanent supportive housing that is built in another jurisdiction to support Lemon Grove homeless individuals. So we could, we could share facilities with the regional cities and then comply with Boise. That is the beauty of this MOU. The benefits, I'm not going to repeat what those benefits are, but these are the benefits. And this MOU has been approved as submitted by the cities of El Cajon, Santee, La Mesa, and already by the county of San Diego. And we hope to bring, or we hope with this MOU will bring additional resources and services and programs to the region. And next, Mina and staff will be happy to answer any questions, but my recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the MOU memorandum of understanding between the cities of East County, La Mesa, El Cajon, Lemon Grove, and Santee, and the county of San Diego.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And before I get to the questions here at the platform, I'd like to check in with our city clerk to see if we have any public comments? We do not. And so I'll start with Councilmember Gasol.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I'm really, really excited about this. I think it's definitely going to be a really good collaboration.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
You just clarified my one question about whether it actually had to be cited, a shelter cited in Lemon Grove. So that was good to hear. And, you know, as part of our general plan, our housing element, we did identify a site in Lemon Grove for a private entity to come in. And then I just wanted to clarify, you know, some of the terminology, low-barrier shelter. And I just want to make sure that I have that understanding correctly from reading the actual MOU. Low barrier means that there's no barriers, like very few barriers to someone entering the shelter. So if they have drug or alcohol problems, as long as they're not causing an actual disturbance in the shelter, they're not going to be restricted from entering.
Absolutely. Your interpretation is correct. It is in line with the housing first model that has been adopted by the state. And a low barrier means they can't have any barriers for their shelter services. So if they have a pet, they're allowed to bring in their pet. If they have an addiction issue, they're allowed to still use the substance that they're addicted to, knowing that the shelter will have wraparound services and try and work with the individual to seek substance abuse help and get them back on the road to recovery. Yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to start. Yep, we're the last to sign this, so.
Yeah, get on it. May I put in the end?
You know, sometimes the solutions in dealing with homelessness is like squeezing your balloon. Squeeze it here and it pops out over there. I think, you know, doing this collaboratively, it kind of eliminates that whole squeezing balloon thing. I will say that in the news this week is Mayor San Diego was squeezing his balloon there, which is going to, I'm sure, pop up over here. So we, you know, it's good that we're starting this and we need to kind of be vigilant on how that, you know, how that's going to affect our situation here. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you so very much. And while I do not have any questions, I do have some comments. And it took quite a bit of work to get us to this point. As all four mayors for the East County region, starting the effort to meet and discuss some of the challenges that we shared. And one of those challenges was dealing with the un-helters and what that looks like as an individual city. And all four mayors agreed that the East County region is stronger together in moving forward and helping those who are in shelter. This conversation was truthfully elevated while Diane Jacobs was still in office. And there was a meeting that was held in El Cajon. Lydia Romero and I, we attended that meeting. And subsequently, in discussions and in agreement, we decided that the East County mayors would take this on as an issue and to come up with a way, number one, to elevate that conversation at the county level regarding the East because we were mixed. And number two, really take a look at how we can get more resources allocated our way. And so we agreed on an MOU process. We directed our city managers to follow up, and this is what we have today. So I'm pleased to see that we are moving forward with this, and it has my support at 100%. So I will check back with the council members to see if we have any additional questions or comments, and then we will be seeking a motion. So I'll start with Councilmember Gasol.
I'm going to say, if other people are ready, I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. I'll turn this over to our city clerk.
Councilmember Gasol?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
And Navasquez?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item number seven, extended sewer service charges for fiscal year 22, 23. And I'll turn this over to Lydia Romero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that our former assistant city manager did the lion's share of this work. And I wish he was here to see the MOU approved, but, you know, if you do see him out and about here in El Cajon, thank him for being our lead in our homeless hour for two and a half years to make sure this is, comes to fruition. So moving on to sewer, sewer service charges for fiscal year 22, 23. Next slide. So this is to be very easy. The sanitation board, which you are now sitting, the sanitation board adopted sewer rates on June 21st, 2021 by resolution, and that is $655 per EDU or equivalent dwelling unit. What staff is asking, or sewer staff is asking today is, is we are asking for no rate increase for this fiscal year 20, oh, no rate increase and just extending the rates from fiscal year 21, 22. And the reason being is we're still in the midst of doing our sewer fee update study, and that won't be completed until the fall. We've been having some trouble getting some data from Helix, and we're working on getting that information. So as soon as we get that, we will be able to come back to the board and present the next five-year study. But we are asking just to have a zero percent increase. It'll be exactly extended from what we did last year. And the recommendation is just to adopt a resolution indicating that we're just extending the FY 21, 22 sewer rates for fiscal year 22, 23.
Thank you so very much. And I'll check in on our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips for this agenda item. We do not. Thank you so very much. And do we have any questions or comments regarding this particular agenda item? I'll start with Councilmember Gasol.
I think the comment is that we had a really good discussion about this already. I feel like we're probably ready to approve it. Are we ready for a motion? All right, I'd like the move that we approved.
We have a motion in a second. I will go ahead and ask our city clerk to call them up.
Councilmember Gasol?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Aye.
And Navasquez?
Aye.
Four zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember meeting in court. The section of meeting is dedicated to oral reports from the city council about meetings attended at the expense of the city. A report should be a summary of meetings attended in your capacity as a city official. As a reminder, we want to be careful to keep these comments brief and to stay within the boundaries of the Brown Act. This includes matters that are not on the agenda. And each council member will have two minutes to write a report. I'll start with Councilmember Gasol.
I think I reported all the meetings from last month, if I'm remembering correctly. And there haven't been any meetings yet this month, though I did, I did want to say that in my role as the board chair for facilitating access to coordinated transportation, on which, at which it is ruled that the council member, I attended a Sandag briefing with some federal transportation bureaucrats, and I mean that in a positive way, they lead an important bureau, that from the FTA, Federal Transportation Administration. It was wonderful to meet some, some people that work on transportation at the national level. And I heard Sonic Prada, the CEO of Sandag, give them an overview of the five big moves, and also my own presentation agency, about fact, I say, to do a three degree presentation. So that was kind of going and thought I'd share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
On May 26, I attended the annual Sandag retreat. And usually, this retreat is three days long. Last year, we didn't do one, and the year before, we didn't do one. So this year, it was only one day. And I think that it should always be only one day. I don't know why we need to spend three days in a retreat with Sandag. But anyway, it was very informative, very productive. I brought each of you the handout from the meeting, from the meeting. We had some extra ones. And we also had some very heated discussions that I'm sure you can imagine. June 3 was a Sandag Transportation Committee meeting, and we recommended TDA funding for MTS and NTCD. We approved the FY 23 operating budgets for MTS and NTCD. And we got a very informative presentation on the San Vicente Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan. And that basically involves the 67 up to Ramona and the 78 heading west. And it's, it's good, I'm glad that Sandag is going to be directing some funds to what can be a very dangerous road, and if there's a fire, a very dangerous evacuation route. So that's all I have to report.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Actually, had a very busy month last month. I'm reporting for the whole month. I didn't miss the last meeting. I apologize for that. I was, you know. I've done two meetings, the regular meetings of the Metro Wastewater Commission. The meeting last week was four hours, two of that in closed session. I sit on San Diego's Independent Rate Oversight Committee, as I mentioned earlier, and I would have attended their infrastructure and outreach, infrastructure and operations committee, their finance committee, and then the full, the full IROC committee. I, since I'm the chair of Metro, I, these days, I interact a lot with staff, so I've had two separate staff meetings. And this year, we created an ad hoc committee to deal with the second phase of pure water, which all of us are paying for. Anybody in our sewer agencies is paying for this. We are included in the early discussions on what that's going to look like, how much that's going to cost. And the big discussion right now is how we're being built. And frankly, the way we've been built over the last two decades hasn't, hasn't been very fair. So for some people, it's been a little contentious, but we're getting there. And the ad hoc has been meeting twice a month, so they're keeping me very busy. And lastly, I attended the Forward Club building, which is the, it was over on Main Street. I think a few of us were there for the women's club of Lemon Grove. I was, first time all years I've been here, I've never been in that building. It was a, it was a very nice, um, um, and a lot of people, it was very well-attended. So it was nice to see the history of Lemon Grove and over time. So it's like I say, been very busy. So.
Last night.
Last night, the Seraphimus, I mean, the Seraphimus installation, that's what I'm thinking. You forgot to mention that.
I was there at the Seraphimus, or you were there.
And I too attended the Forward, the San Diego Forward meeting. That was held. And it really wasn't a meeting. It was more of a historical celebration, an opportunity for residents and people who love Lemon Grove to learn about how iconic the building is. Often, most people refer to the building as the Red Building. But there's quite a rich history involved with how it was built and why it is where it is located in the parking lot at First Presbyterian Church. So I attended that event and provided recognition. I also attended the Legal California Cities African American Caucus Board meeting and the Sandag Board of Directors meeting where the proposed FY 2023, the final program budget, it passed with a tally vote. And I also attended Leadership Day at San Miguel Elementary School. It was a student-led event to highlight their ongoing commitment to academic leadership and student empowerment. San Miguel Elementary was designated as a leader in the White House School. And this is a significant achievement. And I say that because, you know, our student leaders, they truly make a significant impact on the climate and culture of their school, but also in the city of Lemon Grove. And I feel like it's important to recognize that. And that completes my report. I'll turn it over to a manager to write a report.
I just have one quick report I want to make the council aware, and haven't seen or been on Lemon Grove Avenue in the last few days. There's a big, giant stick coming out of the ground, and that is the beginning of our digital billboard. It should be completed and up hopefully by the end of this week, if not next week. And they're working actively for it. And just to remind you, the sweet part about that is we get ads for free to advertise our city event as well as.
as well as collecting $325,000 per annum.
Well, thank you so much for sharing that great move. I think that falls in line with our desire to diversify our funding sources as that will be a new source of revenue realized by the city. And before we, before I turn this over to our city attorney to convene us into our closed session, I do want to let everyone know that our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 16th, right here at the Lemon Grove Mani Center at 6:00 p.m. And so I will turn this over to our city attorney, Kristen Smackey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are adjourned to closed session for two items. The first is labor negotiations under Government Code Section 54957.6. The second is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, City of Coronado at All versus San Diego Association of Governments. And that is under Government Code Section 54956.91. Thank you.